We have a three-dimensional view of the world. A festival like Broad Humor, we don't bring in corporate anything. This festival to date has really been about the filmmakers. It's about welcoming, about having them be able to see their work in a place where people they don't know are enjoying it.
Watching it, right?
And to get that hit of saying, "Oh, my work has value."
Illegally parked cars? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
In L.A. this week, I'm Sayida Pagán at the Peterson Automotive Museum where I'll show you some of the fastest cars that have ever hit the road. I'll have that story coming right up.
It doesn't matter where you live, who your friends are, what kind of clothes you wear, if mentally you're not okay.
A children's writing workshop with deep ties to the entertainment industry isn't just for girls anymore. I'm Gil Reyes at the latest Write Girl workshop. I'll have that story next.
Hey, everyone, I'm Yana Kay. Here's what's happening on L.A. this week. As the city of L.A. continues to battle homelessness, we sit down with Councilmember Mitchell Farrell to talk about what's been done so far, the progress that's being made, and the challenges the city still faces to find homes for those living on the streets.
Whether you hate the idea, love the idea, whether people judge it good, bad, or ugly, if we want to house people who are experiencing homelessness, we have to get them under a roof and we have to get them well. The city of Los Angeles is the only city in the entire state that has created a fund to house people who are homeless.
So many people out there think that really nothing is done because they see so many people on the street. Where are we now with bridge housing and with other types of housing in Los Angeles for the homeless?
Sure, we're heading toward over 20 bridge housing sites. Right now, we have a handful of them open. We have two in my district and one is about to double in capacity, which will get us to over 200 beds in the 13th district for bridge housing. So what all this means is that in terms of what people see in their neighborhood, in the commercial corridors, in some of our parks, certainly downtown and all across the city, homeless encampments, under bridges, et cetera. Once these units begin coming online, and it's happening now, we're putting people by the hundreds now into bridge housing. That's the temporary category. And then we're going to be putting thousands of people into this permanent supportive housing within months, within years. In a few short years, we'll have 2,000, 3,000 units. And when we start getting to where we're opening 5,000, 6,000, 7,000, 8,000, and up to the 10,000 units that are in the pipeline, there should be a visible decrease to Angelinos as they navigate through the city. We're human beings. No matter if you're living in poverty or if you're a multimillionaire, we all have pride. Humans have dignity. They want dignity. You can't just hit someone over the head like, "I'm doing all this for you, aren't you lucky?" It has to be a very sensitive, thoughtful approach. What I know is that people want opportunity. You give a helping hand and, you know, you help lift people up, but they take ownership of their own destiny and want to provide for their families. And that's the kind of dignity we need to offer people.
Providing services for those living on the street is one way to lend a helping hand. In Reseda, the community and service providers came out to help those in need.
We represent L.A. Homeless Services Authority, and we basically fund a lot of the programs to help our homeless population. And because of the increase of our homeless population, we want to be able to work with the community and make sure that they know that there's programs in their community where they can be part of.
And the idea is to think not just about what we're doing, but what we can do to really take that next step and not just address homelessness, but ultimately end it.
A lot of times, people are ashamed because they're told, "Well, you ain't never gonna be nothing." When this woman who was a supervisor gave me that hope, it changed my entire life.
There's a lot of misconceptions and myths about, you know, what the causes of homelessness. We were focusing a lot on the chronic homeless population, but right now, because of the economy, there's so many new people who really do need housing. And so the biggest thing is the community really will be really beneficial to helping this issue by assisting us in developing, ensuring that those programs are allowed in the community. People who are homeless stay in their communities.
We're trying to connect people and services and really make sure that we're operating in a strategic, positive direction.
Organizations need to not, I'm not saying put on the shoes of the person, but just have empathy.
It started as a place for kids to go to after school, but it now has evolved into something much bigger. We sit down with the executive director of A Place Called Home.
When you think of the word "home," hopefully you think of warm memories and good times. But what happens if where you reside doesn't necessarily evoke those feelings? Our guest Jonathan Zeichner really wants to make sure that youth in south-central Los Angeles know that they have a place called home.
It started a year after the unrest of '92.
Will the jury find the defendant not guilty?
It was founded by a pretty remarkable woman named Deborah Constance.
I really wanted to start a place for all the children to go to, to be safe, to feel safe.
She raised some money and she got some property, some rooms in a church, and she started providing safety and love. And that's really what the DNA of A Place Called Home is, safety and love.
What changes? Why is everything idyllic within the confines when things are not necessarily grand outside?
At A Place Called Home, anything can happen, and the kids know that. They come every day and they realize they don't know who they're going to meet, what's going to happen, what field trip are they going to go on.
It seems to me not just a safe haven, but this place of inspiration and this place of promise.
Yeah, it's an oasis. And I think, you know, feeling like you can be yourself and that you're always going to get the encouragement and the nourishment, and not just nourishment for your body, but for your mind and your spirit as well.
Helping young people achieve their dreams was the goal of a recent youth job fair, which helped connect them to job opportunities.
Today, we are hosting the Passport to Your Future Youth Job Fair in partnership with Westfield Culver City. We hope to have our 500 job seekers who showed up today to connect with Westfield Culver City employers. We have 33 employers here today looking to hire for seasonal, permanent, part-time, and full-time positions.
I'm looking for any type of job right now, especially anything that can have anything for 17-year-olds.
I'm hoping to get some experience in retail. I'm going to college next year, so it's a good thing to be able to put on my resume and hopefully show people later on.
Youth from all over Los Angeles found out about the opportunity through their school or their youth source center and through word of mouth and on social media.
Our goal is to connect as many young people as possible to employment opportunities and also to help support Mayor Eric Garcetti's goal of connecting 20,000 youth annually to employment by 2020.
She was a human rights activist who had changed the lives of so many young black LGBTQ people, and now she's being recognized for making a difference in her community.
Ladies and gentlemen, we, in a few minutes, are going to have a square where people are going to walk up and down Pico, drive up and down Pico, and look up and say, "What?" Let's give it up for June!
It's the most amazing concept I've ever seen in my whole entire life. I wouldn't miss it for the world. I am so proud of my mom. I'm so proud of her.
This is a woman who helped change the course of the history of this country, did things when people said that she couldn't. There was always an obstacle in her way, but somehow she either, you know, knocked out the obstacle, hopped over it, went around it. She's always represented the community well and has always given back.
This is a place that's important to me because when I was younger, I used to come here. And I know there's a lot of people from all ages, all walks of life, that have had some memorable moments here, and this has been a place for everyone to come and feel welcomed.
Everybody's thought, "Well, it's been 46 years now that I've walked through that door and that I would be here for 42 years, serving and imparting too."
Really glad that this day has taken place and that I'm here to see it. Fantastic.
It's more than I ever imagined would happen. And most of the time, folks are unable to appreciate or either they're not on the planet any longer and just to be here and feel the love here with folks, how it is that I feel about them too.
It was all about young Latina ladies and helping them feel confident and empowered. Councilwoman Nuri Martinez hosted a special evening in their honor.
This is the Latino Empowerment Health Summit here in the city of Los Angeles, enclosure of Latino Heritage Month. I wanted to do one last event to emphasize the importance of taking care of our health. So we wanted to make an event that is open to the Latino community, to communities of color, to ensure that they're talking about their health, their well-being, whether it's emotional, mental, or physical. Women need to start taking care of themselves.
Check in with your body. How do you feel in this moment?
It doesn't matter how much money you make or how successful you are if you don't feel good about yourself. It doesn't matter where you live, who your friends are, what kind of clothes you wear, if mentally you're not okay.
I believe it to be very important for students to participate in this because it's a way to lift their self-esteem, to relate to somebody, and in the end, inspire them.
Some Hollywood stars are helping girls in underserved areas get their foot in the door of the entertainment industry. Gil Reyes has more from South L.A.
We talked about kind of songs that you like, but do any of you guys ever write songs?
A children's workshop with some powerful Hollywood connections is empowering young women through self-expression. The program is called Write Girl.
My favorite thing to do is write in school.
Because of this program?
Yeah. I honestly like the teachers and I like how we get to write about different stuff every day because like in a classroom, like we write for like the same things for a long time, but here we get to write about different things.
For nearly two decades, Write Girl has offered free writing workshops for young women ages 13 to 18. Karen Taylor is executive director.
I think the main impetus for me starting this was doing some workshops for youth in New York City and seeing the lack of creative writing programs and mentoring programs and see how young people had the light go on when they saw how writing could be fun and interesting.
Write Girl was created in light of some startling statistics. Considered that of the top 100 films last year, women made up just 15% of all the writers. That's according to a San Diego State study. One of Write Girl's goals is to even the playing field for female writers in Hollywood. Helping out are actors Seth Rogen and Lauren Graham. At a recent workshop, they critiqued and also performed monologues written by Write Girl students. The program has about 500 students throughout Los Angeles.
We do publish their work in a book. We do some performances at bookstores and theaters all around Los Angeles so they get on their feet and get a chance to share their work with the community. And then we also do workshops like we're doing here today at Roosevelt Park.
Mentors Alex McHale and Andrea Esparza teach the young people songwriting.
I almost think that I get more out of it than they get out of it sometimes. When you help guide these young people to finding what they want to say, you can see them want to do it more. They want to continue writing. That's what keeps you coming back for more.
There are no wrong answers here. You're here to find your voice and express your feelings about what you think that we are doing.
This particular session, called Bold Ink Writers, is welcome to girls and boys. Over the past few weeks, the program has helped student Mark come out of his shell.
It helps you improve your grades, helps you like express yourself and be open-minded.
We are always trying to reach young people that need this the most, that are struggling with all kinds of challenges, but we're also inclusive of young people that would want to come to this, that have an inspiration to want to write, or need a mentor, or need this community.
Enroll in sessions or become a volunteer. Find out more at wrigirl.org.
Write Girl also helps teens graduate from high school and move on to college. If you're interested in food, and who isn't, then you'll probably appreciate a new series of food events and exhibits happening at parks all over the city. Local artists have been commissioned to interpret how food impacts the people of L.A. Sayida Pagán checked out some of the exhibits and has this story. A humorous food art exhibit made from thousands of flaming hot Cheetos on display in south L.A. And how about park benches with rounded ends resembling human teeth at Pershing Square? Now here's something to make you think, a huge display of single-use takeout food containers in North Hollywood. These one-of-a-kind, thought-provoking art pieces make up an initiative called Current L.A. Food. The Los Angeles Department of Cultural Affairs commissioned the art pieces.
It highlights the important cultural exchanges that happen around food. It builds our city's sense of civic pride.
The idea is to bring these free food art events to public parks and near mass transportation to make it easier for all Angelinos to experience art near where they live and work. The hope is that the Current L.A. Food exhibit will start a conversation about food, what's good and what needs to be improved. Artist Jasmine Orea created the flaming hot Cheeto sculptures at Martin Luther King Jr. Recreation Center. Her message is about food access.
I'm trying to talk about food deserts in south L.A. and all over Los Angeles and other parts of the world, and talking about how the easiest accessible food is processed food.
Along with more than a dozen actual exhibits at parks all over the city, several programs and panel discussions on global issues and food equity are being held. The Institute of Contemporary Art carefully selected the pieces.
The idea of food and art is not a new one, but it is a really timely moment to look at the intersection of art and food and look at issues of food through the lens of art and the perspective of artists.
Organizers say besides the fact that food art gets people talking about some important social issues, Current L.A. Food is helping to elevate the profile of the local artists whose work is now getting international attention. Current Food L.A. runs through November 3rd. For more info, visit currentla.org. A new partnership is announced to provide job training in manufacturing. A new grant to the city of L.A. will help provide safer homes for low-income families. And it just got much cooler to hang out in the Hoover Triangle Plaza. All this in City View. The Los Angeles Housing and Community Investment Department was awarded a $5.6 million grant for their lead hazard remediation program by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The grant will help in efforts to prevent childhood lead poisoning in homes occupied by lower-income families with children under six. Mayor Eric Garcetti has announced the formation of L.A. Made 4.0, a partnership that aims to provide training and career opportunities in manufacturing. The program will include training in such avenues as biotechnology, fashion, food and beverage, aerospace, and defense. Councilmember Gil Cedillo celebrated the rededication of Hoover Triangle Plaza improvements with two shade structures, canopy trees, decorative pots, additional benches, and trash receptacles. Located at the intersection of South Union Avenue, South Hoover Street, and West 23rd Street in the University Park neighborhood, the shaded area makes for a great gathering location. It's a film festival that highlights L.A. stories as seen through the eyes of local filmmakers. It was a big turnout as a total of 26 short films were recognized.
I wanted to make something that sort of represents the side of L.A. that people, you know, have always been interested in, but maybe don't know the story behind it.
The reason I was so excited about this contest is because it was, you know, a chance to like kind of join the community as a filmmaker. No matter how hard I'm working like to, you know, make my dream succeed in this city, I also have to stop occasionally to appreciate the city itself and what it is.
New Filmmakers provides a huge service to the emerging filmmaking community. It represents those who are underrepresented largely in the film industry today.
Well, it's our first time, and so far, we've been very impressed and excited to be a part of the community and meeting all the people that are here tonight.
It really covers the entire gamut of the filmmaking process and allows, it allows everybody that wants to be involved in film to tell their stories and give voice to their own visions.
If you love fast cars and auto racing, then you're sure to love an exhibit that's showing at the Peterson Automotive Museum in Los Angeles. 10 of the world's fastest, most famous racing cars are currently on display. These racing cars are the best of the best, part of a rare collection owned by Bruce Meyer, the founding chairman of the Peterson Automotive Museum. The Winning Numbers exhibit has been attracting visitors all year long. They can experience the sights and sounds at the heart of auto racing and get an up-close look at the winningest racing cars ever. This 1957 Ferrari came in first more than 25 times.
It's a kind of Italian vehicle that if Americans had built it, would call it a hot rod.
This first production 1962 Cobra is also part of the exhibit. And the 1960 Corvette you see here was part of a winning team at Le Mans, one of the most prestigious competitions in the world.
What's especially interesting about it is that it was one of the first Corvettes to ever race at Le Mans, not the first.
Museum historians say it took Bruce Meyer years to acquire this collection.
Somebody who's decided to himself that he's going to collect only the best, only the winningest, only the fastest, only those that are associated with the best race car drivers.
Besides the fact that these are some of the fastest cars in the world, what's also interesting is that many of them are still being driven. In fact, Meyer and his friends drove many of the cars directly to the museum from Beverly Hills. After seeing the collection, visitors were completely in awe.
It's just wonderful with all these cars. We love it.
Paul Durth had to come to the exhibit. He used to race cars back in the 1960s. He got emotional as he saw some of the cars once again.
I was there when they ran this. I was there when they ran that one, you know, and a few other dractors here. I've seen them all run.
The Winning Numbers exhibit is the first installment of a three-part series called California Collecting. It's all part of the Peterson's 25th anniversary celebration. Each exhibit will feature prominent collections from some of the area's most acclaimed car enthusiasts. The Winning Numbers exhibit runs through January of 2020. Well, math comes alive at a new interactive exhibit that's showing kids how fun math can really be.
It's so important as teachers to know that our students don't live in a bubble and they're not just in the classroom.
Math Alive is about life, but it's about where you find mathematics in life. And so if you're a person who thinks you're afraid of math, you think you can't do it, this is a perfect exhibit for you.
The thing that we measure is how much fun are these kids having and how much do they enjoy playing? And you know you're getting them hooked. They're learning math without knowing that they're even learning math.
Learning addition and subtraction and everything, it's easier when we get to come around and look around and have a hands-on experience with everything.
I go to the science center school and it's a lot easier. We know a lot about the stuff that we might want to be when we grow up.
I want to be an astronaut.
Rev up your engine at a classic car show, bring your best friend to a Strut Your Mutt event and help save a life, and head over to a Dave the Dead celebration at Grand Park. All this in Things to Do. An all-day event featuring a classic car showcase, curated group photography show, multimedia art installations, automobilia, and more. The centerpiece of the museum auto will be the auditorium, which will house a curated art and photography exhibition with over 20 selected artists. Each piece centered on the theme for the show, which is the cultural and emotional relevance of the automobile. Surrounding the indoor group show, the event will host and showcase over 200 pre-registered classic automobiles curated by their individual style, look, and energy, representing a variety of makes and models. It all takes place Sunday, October 27th from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Friendship Auditorium, located at 3201 Riverside Drive. For more, visit their listing on Eventbrite. Best Friends Animal Society is teaming up with partner rescue groups, shelters, and animal welfare organizations to help save the lives of homeless cats and dogs at Strut Your Mutt. Strut Your Mutt is a series of charity dog walks that brings communities together to raise money and save the lives of homeless pets. When you fundraise, you choose where your support goes, to Best Friends Animal Society or to your favorite participating local animal welfare organization. This year's event is on October 26th at Exposition Park in Los Angeles. Grand Park celebrates the traditions of Dia de los Muertos in partnership with Self Health Graphics, featuring altars and performances by local artists and community groups. There are 35 altars this year curated by Self Health Graphics located throughout Grand Park, as well as the newly renovated Music Center Plaza. Grand Park's Downtown Dia de los Muertos returns Saturday, October 26th through Sunday, November 3rd. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at L.A. this week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of L.A. this week. See you next time for more of L.A. This Week.
Let's protect our wildlife together. Please, no smoking in Griffith Park.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. Everybody, please take a seat. Shhh. Please take a seat. It's Tuesday, October 22nd. We want to welcome you to City Hall. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is working. Madam, I mean, welcome. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Blumenfield, Bonin, Buscayino, Sadio, Harris Dawson, Weesar, Kuretz, Krikorian, Lee, Martinez, O'Farrow, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, ten members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Bonin moves. Rodriguez seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Buscayino moves. Lee seconds, next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Okay, why don't we all rise? We'll be led today by Mr. Buscayino.
With honor, thank you, Mr. President. All rise, please. Face the flag. Together, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Buscayino. Let's run through the agenda.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue. Item 1F to November 26, 2019, sir.
So ordered.
Items 1 through 4 are items noticed for public hearing for the record. Item 1D is in Council District 8. And also for item 1, the department recommends to receive and file 1G because fees are paid, reduce the lien for 1A to $484.42 due to partial payment. And there are cards on 1 through 4, sir.
Okay, continue.
Items 5 through 13 are cards for which, are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tab, you lay the vote.
11 ayes. Mr. President, orders for 5 through 8 are continued to October 29 unless reconsidered with 12 members present. And next are items 14 through 30, and those are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, sir.
Okay, without objection. Those items are before us. Do you have cards?
Yes. There are cards on 14, 15, I'm sorry, 14 through 20, 25, and 29.
Okay, let's hold those items. Vote on the remaining.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. In the meantime, since right now, there are cards on 14 through 30, sir.
Okay, then continue.
Items 31 and 32 are items scheduled for closed session. Those are items waived from Budget and Finance, sir. And there are cards on 31 and 32, sir.
Okay, let's continue.
That brings council to items called special. General public comment or presentation, sir.
All right. Mr. Murphy, let's go to Sean Murphy. I'll do a little bit of public comment. Good to see you Saturday, Sean.
Crenshaw loves me.
Yes, they do.
Wonder why they love me? Because I treat them with respect.
Okay, you have items 1A through 1K, and then items 2, 3, 4, and then 14 through 18. Yes, go ahead.
Item 14, I'm supporting because we, I'm 14 and 18, I am supporting. Item 1A, uh, not supporting, sorry. General public comment.
Can we give him his general?
Uh, yeah. I had a good time at Taste of Soul. I listened to gospel music. It was fun. But you need to have tables and chairs for people to sit down. They can't, people just can't eat standing up. Some people can't. Also, a bike lane went on Crenshaw.
Thank you. Okay, let's go with Patricia, Ms. McAllister. Okay, items 1A through 1G, and then items 3, then items 14, 25, and 29. Yes, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. President. First of all, let's see liens. Mr. President, I think we should hold off on all liens since we've had thousands of more evictions since this no-fault evictions came about. I think we need to do that. 45 million, number 3, for acquisition rehabilitation at 301 units at the Cecil Hotel. Well, Mr. President, I have a problem with all of these, this money going out, 45 million, because it takes three, four, five years for you all to build something. You haven't built any HHH yet, yet, any housing. Now here you want to adopt the ordinance to temporarily prohibit no-fault evictions. Now, Mr. President, the city itself has over 600 lawyers, and then you've got about 200 lawyers who are consultants. They have never heard of no-fault evictions? Based on what I've been reading in the media, you guys just found out about it because an attorney went to some, some event, and he was telling property owners that they could start evicting before January 1, and raising the rents, rather, and evicting. So I don't believe that the governor with all the lawyers in the state, this city didn't know, never heard of no-fault evictions. The governor should have put that on that bill, 1482 Act of that very day, not January 1. A lot of business, a lot of owners have already evicted people, raised their rents, $2,000, $3,000 a month. Monthly status report, implementation of safe parking. You're going to need more safe parking because, as I said, based on this no-fault evictions, thousands of more, Los Angeles, people who live in Los Angeles and the state of California are being evicted. So that's going to cause more problems. I see you guys are just not doing your job. You cannot tell me you never heard of no-fault evictions. You heard about it at some sort of conference where a lawyer is going around telling people who own property that they can throw people out before January 1. Multifamily housing revenue bonds, 24.3 million. Now, this is at 11301 Wilshire Boulevard. Well, I went and looked up that property. That is supposed to be property for homeless veterans. Nowhere in this motion does it say this is for homeless veterans. You can't keep leaving out the veterans. This is a homeless veteran residence, and you're going to build, you say, 207 or 60 multifamily units. When you tell me it's multifamily unit, veterans usually not multifamily. So that means you're taking this property from our veterans and making it out of a multifamily housing project. Now, remember, I'm going to keep my eye on this property. This doesn't mean anything because you guys can get the money and build it five, six, seven years from now. I don't know where the money is going. We haven't found out about HHH yet. Now, our comptroller, Galpin, he's trying to act like he doesn't know anything. I've been going over there for years, asking them why they're not building. All of a sudden, he comes up in 2019, "Oh, I didn't know anything about it." We need to vote him out of office.
Just give her one minute.
Thank you. My public comment, God bless President Trump. He is doing a fantastic job in building the borders, deporting the millions of illegal aliens, getting aliens out of affordable housing, and investigating Democrat Joe Biden and his son Hunter Biden. and investigating Democrat Joe Biden and his son, Hunter Biden, who is a crackhead, for illegally receiving 1.5 billion from Communist China. China's ability to get US trade secrets increased substantially under Obama and Joe Biden. Did Biden's son sell trade secrets for that 1.5 billion that the communists gave him? See, I look deep into stuff, no government, the government gave him that 1.5 billion, not any business people, these communists, China is not going to give anybody 1.5 billion if they don't have any trade secrets. And I read that we've had so many trade secrets to go to China under Obama administration, it's not even funny. We're going to get you Democrats out of this office, you're not going to overfill this government, no coup, no coup!
Thank you, thank you, Ms. McAllister. Okay, Madam, Madam Clerk, we have 12 members, do you want to vote on reconsideration?
Uh, yes, sir, that's reconsidering the orders on 5, 6, 7, 8, sir.
Okay, let's vote on reconsideration, let's open the roll, close the roll, Tabulae the vote.
13 ayes.
Now, let's actually vote on those items. Open the roll, close the roll, Tabulae the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, I'd like to call Mr. Previn, if he's still around, Mr. Previn. Items 1, 3, 4, 14, 25, 31, and 32.
Thank you, sir, it's Eric Previn, and up in the Ethics Commission, they just made another finding that if you use an LLC to smear around in a laundering fashion money, you basically get away with it, the LLC has to write a little check to compensate the Ethics Commission, but there's going to be no harm coming to the guy over at Hillcrest LLC. And you know, it sends a strong message to fundraisers who are out there giving money to the candidates.
Mr. Previn, which item are you on?
It was, uh, thank you, it was number 5 up in the Ethics Commission.
Mr. Previn, Mr. Previn, items 1, 3, 4, 14, 25, 31, and 32.
Oh, thank you, well, the Mills Act is another great program, here you have an interest in the public to preserve properties and their, their cultural historic status. The way we do it, sir, and you're the best at this, although Mr. Ridley Thomas gets credit for kicking off the program.
Mr. Previn, I think the Mills Act is number 9, is it not?
The Cultural Historic Landmark, yeah, what they do, sir, is the Mills Act, Mills Act.
Mr. Previn, this is the last time I'm going to say that you have items 1, 3, 4, 14, 25, 31, and 32.
All right, so 14, obviously, is the one that we can speak about, I appreciate, I don't want to praise anybody down here as a rule, but I do think that here, we are taking a step in the right direction, because we obviously do not want Angelino's evicted subsequent to the governor making his big decision. And what we would really like, sir, and I know that it's a bit of a dream, but it's a good dream, is to protect people going back as far as March. Now, hashtag Blumenfield knows the truth about that, but I don't know, I don't know if we're going to get it done, because I know that you are trying to be in everybody's pocket, and by the way, congratulations on raising over a million for the supervisory district raise, this is just a astonishing amount of firepower.
Let's go to his general public comment, Mr. Previn, give him one minute for general public, go ahead.
Well, I appreciate that, sir, in my one minute, I have to say how kind of disappointed I am in what I'm noticing as candidates are starting lawsuits on behalf of the public to kind of get the love. I'd be, I don't want to be too specific, because it's not proper, but you know, Krikorian's going after Waze, and all the people are coming out to say thanks, I think we've seen, you know, Harvard Westlake's activity in our district is very dicey, and we're seeing that the lobbyist fundraisers, you don't know this, sir, but the lobbyists are allowed to do fundraising, so in just last quarter, they raised almost $300,000, and that what they do, they're not allowed to give money themselves, but they get their wives and clients, basically, to put money in the basket, and then slide the basket down to Blumenfield's house. Now, he's at number 3, that's odd, so it's mostly the even numbers who are taking the big money, obviously, Mr. Lee is the king at the moment, because he's getting a double whammy with the Waste Management double election you set up out in CD12 for maximum drinking from the Public Smashing Fund. Have a great weekend, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Previn, okay, do we have someone, the last name is Datem, Datem? Last name, Datem? Please come forward, Datem. Okay, next person is, I can think, last name Scorch. Okay, now, let's go to Schmidt, Corey Schmidt, Corey, one, items 1A through 1K, 2 through 4, 14 through 20, through 30, okay, come on.
Okay, Corey Schmidt, for the record, thanks for taking my comment today, okay, so, I first off want to start off with numbers 15 through 20 in regards to the street lighting, I see there's a lot of outcry, and I, I don't agree with the district over on Ashland and Charnock, and I was wondering what the, I know we have the LA Fire Department on the agenda, so I wasn't sure how they were doing, and then, next thing I want to talk about is the liens, so, I've got a big problem with all these nuisance properties, you know, we're putting up multifamily housing, but we don't include very much affordable housing, which was my next thing, was the affordable housing standards, we put about this much affordable housing in these projects, and I just don't think that that's solving our problem that we have, you know, I think it's like over on Purdue, we've got a giant property that's going to be coming in, or at least they want to bring it in, and it's smack in the middle of all these little properties, and it's just a giant tower that's bulging at the seams, and I just, I don't agree with these properties, they're nuisances, and I think that the one on Colby Street, I think Colby is right, and I think that the stormwater, we should be making sure that we are watching out for the drainage, because it's going to get backed up. So, what I want to talk about next is safe parking, so, I have told you before about the voting fraud kind of stuff that I'm dealing with, and, you know, I was not added into the, as Chair of my homeless committee, because, you know, we've got voting problems, there's people all taking up the spots, and I'm just, I'm baffled right now, because I just got someone into our safe parking program, and I'm trying to help out the homeless, and the Chair of our homeless committee, and, you know, I'm up for censure, so, because I'm helping homeless people, and, so, because I'm up for censure, how about this censure? I'm going to put this guy on blast, his name is Jay Handle, he's a piece of shit, and he basically came into the office and was recording me and telling me that I needed to give up my keys, because I was letting some homeless lady use my vacuum to clean her car, so that she doesn't look like she's got a bunch of garbage in our parking lot, so, you know, and on that note, you know, I just think this guy's part of the finale club, you know, I don't think he's green and clean, so, you know, speaking of a trip and fall, I just take this guy.
Let's give him his one minute.
Do what you got to do, you guys have the power, remove this guy, he's not helping anything, just like, nobody's helping the homeless, we've got a giant problem, I just brought this lady down to St. Joseph's over on the west side, and they only take five people, they only take five people, we got there at 6:00 in the morning, and then they only selected people randomly who cut in front of us, and I'm just like, dude, this is the reason why we're not fixing the problem, is because no one's doing anything, and then you're getting reprimanded for helping homeless people, it's just, this whole thing is ridiculous, you need to pull this guy, use your power, use Dunn, whatever you got to do, just, you know, I want to fix this, I want to fix this, I don't see anybody else doing it, so, you guys have the power.
Thank you, okay, Mr. Spindler, 1 through 4, 14 through 32.
So, welcome back criminals, so, we have today, Herb Wesson is going to give us a liquor license at Target. When I shop at Target, I like to get fucked up while I'm in Target, and I like to take my basket and fill it up with things that I can't afford, and then use my neighbor's credit cards, like Herb Wesson does, and then I enjoy a comfortable beverage. Alcohol, getting drunk, fucked up, Target, yes, when you go to Target, you can afford to get fucked up a lot easier than at other competitors, and that'll put the other liquor stores out of business, and then, and John Lee knows this, John Lee shops at Target, and he regularly gets fucked up.
Let's stay on topic.
You know, you can see right now, he looks drunk. So, now we have tenant protection. Look at Paul Coretts living in that rent-controlled apartment, voting on legislation affecting rent-controlled properties. The FBI calls it a conflict of interest, Herb Wesson calls it, shut the fuck up, Wayne, and get on the topic. So, facts, he has a condo over in West Hollywood that he owns, yet, he's supposedly living in a little apartment under some woman's name, and he has his tax bill for his property in West Hollywood mailed to his phony-ass LA fucking apartment that's rent-controlled. He needs rent control, because when the FBI dices his ass, he's going to need tenant protections, that's right, you're all going to need tenant protections, because tenants are treated like shit in this fucking city, and it's got to stop, you greedy fucking landlords, you Jew bastards, most of you, you rotten fucking corrupt investors, you filthy bankers, and you lousy grubby fucking management companies, fuck all of you, you're raising the rents too high, it doesn't have to be that high, and then I go to Lhasa, and I say, Lhasa, why are you closing 15 minutes before 5:00 every fucking day?
Because Gil Sadio says we can't.
And why is that?
Because Gil Sadio is being blackmailed under a scandal that David Zonheiser wants to write about but can't, because he's currently involved in another BOBO.
All right, so, what happens when you own real estate? Go to number 1, these blood-sucking fucking city call cocksuckers give you liens, and they repo your house, so don't trust them, trust the FBI.
Thank you, let's give him his one minute.
That's right, God bless the FBI, thank you. And today, David Zonheiser, the lousiest, dirtiest player in all of City Hall, hides behind his LA Times newspaper to cover up for Herb Wesson. Herb Wesson didn't pay for no wedding for Alexis Marin and Justin Wesson, somebody else did, didn't they, Herb? Who did it? How do you go and rent the whole Wilsherey Bell Theater and a goddamn $240,000 wedding when you're six months behind in your mortgage payments? How do you do it? Well, here's the answer, you go to all your campaign buddies and go, I'm going to have a wedding for my son, well, I'll go, put me on the list, and I'll give the lovely couple a wedding gift, and it all gets covered up. City Watch LA, David Zonheiser, criminal reporter.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Spindler, thank you. Lynn Moses, items 1 through 1K, 2, 3, 4, and 33, Mr. Moses, please come forward, and item 14.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
First of all, the liens, I am against all these liens, people, you're putting liens on people's properties, items, you have 2,900, 500, 2,900, 3,800, 2,600, you're putting, continually putting liens on people's properties, you're creating homelessness, you're creating repossession, you're kicking people out in the street, which is what Marquise Dawson does best. Marquise Harris Dawson, king of homelessness, evicting the EDD people from their, their offices on 54th and Crenshaw, making a sweetheart deal for himself, because he wants to be number 1 on Crenshaw.
Mr. Moses, let's get back to the items, sir.
Okay, I'm getting back to the items, I'm talking about the same thing, we should talk, we should take this money, if you're going to take the money, and reimburse the city, because Dawson, on August and Sep, August of last year, you people authorized $400,000 for him to move his offices from Vermont and Manchester to where he is now, the AME, and, and you authorize, he spent another 300 and something thousand dollars, because he thought he was going to take over the EDD office, you criminal.
Mr. Moses, you got to get back on topic, that's all I ask.
That's almost a million dollars, yes, sir.
You got to get on topic.
That's almost a million dollars, you can take this lien money and reimburse the city, or take it out of his pocket.
Why don't, do you want to just go to your general public comment?
Item number 3, no, item number 3.
Okay, then, you got to stay on the subject.
Item number 3, sir. You want to take $45 million in bonds for people that can add, and build 301 units. In September, you took, you wanted $65 billion in bonds to build 114 units, that's over $600,000 per unit, this is the money you people are spending from the city, these units can be built for $30,000 for homeless, this is how much money you people are stealing. You're putting people on the street, you have to step over them to get in here.
Okay, let's give him his one minute for general public comment.
Marquise Dawson is an expert on evictions. Evicting the employees, making a sweetheart deal, because you want to be on 54th and Crenshaw, why is your office, why is your office vacant on Manchester, on Vermont and Manchester, it's a blight right now, full of trash, because you want to move, took you $400,000 to move to where you are now, while they're in court, you're, you're trying to make a deal to be, put your butt on Crenshaw Boulevard, you are an empty suit, you want to evict the Yefiba Center, the only community and cultural center in the area, evict Dorset
We'll just.
The council shall not discuss.
Wait, 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 Mr. Weesar, let him back, I'm going to have to give Mr. Moses another 10 seconds, this, in fact, your concern, he is within, he's on general public comment.
My concern is, not only for this speaker, for all speakers, that they are not, the rules of council are not to address individual council members, but the council and the public as a whole, so, I just wanted to clarify that, if that in fact is a rule.
Okay, well, let me, I, Mr. City Attorney, I think the Presiding Officer has flexibility where it relates to that, I'm going to give him 20 seconds.
That's true.
Give him 20 seconds.
Just because I'm talking, just because I mentioned somebody's name, you are not to speak while, during public comment, talk about the rules, the council shall not discuss, the council shall not discuss or take action relative to any general public comment, so sit there, be quiet, please.
No, Mr. Moses, you got 10 seconds, wrap it up.
You have something, you have something in writing you want me to say? This is my public comment, this is free speech, you cannot regulate free speech.
Your time is over, okay. That ends multi-public comment, let us vote on items, Mr., I missed somebody, Mr. Sadio? Mr. Weesar, and then Mr. Sadio.
Yes, this individual has been.
Yes, this individual has been told about the rules in the past. And so if we are going to enforce a rule and explain the rule to individuals in each meeting, the city attorney or someone else should remind that person that we've told them about those rules in the past. And so we, I just wanted to clarify that, that if in fact that is a rule, we should be consistent with that. Thank you.
Okay, and before I recognize Mr. Sadio, Mr. Spindler, Mr. Spindler, that's your last warning. I did one more and then I will remove you, Mr. Sadio.
Mr. President, I was only gonna note that the council member is correct and that we were not infringing on the speaker's public comment, but rather bringing to their attention their breach of the decorum and the rules of the council.
Thank you, sir. Okay, let's vote on items 2 through 4 and items 15 through 20. 2 through 4, items 15 through 20. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Now let's vote on items 21B, as in boy, through 28, and item 30. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Now let's vote on items 31.
Sorry. 14 ayes.
Now let's vote on items 31 and 32. So, Madam Clerk, you do have to read those items.
Yes. For item 31, in the case entitled Jose Luis Lopez Jr. versus City of Los Angeles and Wally's Wine and Spirits, there is a recommendation to expend up to $3.2 million in settlement. Item 32, in the case entitled Mohammed Reza Ershadi versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend up to $250,000 in settlement.
All right, on that item, those items, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Can I call Terry Williams, items 1K, item 1K, Terry Williams? Terry Williams? Terry William, are you here? Terry on item 1K? Okay, let's move forward. So.
Mr. President, there is.
Are you Terry Williams? All right, no, he is not.
Mr. President, for item 1K, the Department of Building and Safety requests to continue that item to November 26th, sir.
Without objection. So let's vote on item 1. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Matt Fisher, item 29, Matt Fisher, please come forward, Matt Fisher.
Hello, Matt Fisher from Venice Neighborhood Council, but I'm representing myself today. I'd just like to encourage this project and say the VA has a lot of space, we could be doing more over there. Mr. B, thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote, let's open the roll. Item 29, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. Sadio, are you ready with your presentation? Mr. Sadio, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, there's a request to send item 7 forthwith, sir.
Send item forthwith, 7 forthwith, without objection.
Sir.
What Lana says, Lana does.
Yes, sir, the floor is yours.
Almost called you Mr. Speaker. Mr. President, I'm very excited this morning. This weekend, we had an incredible celebration over on the East Side. What's known as East Side Market was opened by Joe Campagna and Dominic Ponchorelli in 1929 on the corner of Alpine and Figaroa. It was one of four Italian markets in the Victor Heights neighborhood. There is large Italian and Italian-American population. They gave it the nickname of Little Italy. Johnny Anguilli started in 1959 as a delivery boy and worked his way up to becoming a butcher. Sandwich counter started by Johnny in 1965 to adapt to the neighborhood demographics as the community began to change. And these changes led to the grocery business closing in 1974, but the sandwich counter continues on this day. East Side is the last of the original four Italian markets, the rest having closed with most of the Italian-American residents having left. They've all navigated towards Joe Buscaino's community down in San Pedro, preserving a bastion of the contributions of the Italian and Italian-American community here in the city of Los Angeles. The East Side Market is an institution here in the center of the city. People come throughout the city to eat there. It also has a very, as you know from the county, a very significant place in terms of county workers and city workers and state workers. Government workers, for whatever reason, just love to go there. In fact, they have a DA special, which is a pastrami, roast beef, meatballs, and sausage, and that's commemorated at the East Side Market. Thank you. Recently, Johnny retired and has passed the managing role on to his sons, and they're here with us today.
He's really retired, he's still coming.
He's not really retired. Anthony, Rocky, and Vito. Anthony is here with his son Veronica, Rocco's here with Mary Ann, his wife, and Vito's here with his wife Angela. We're here to celebrate 90 years of business. We look forward to 90 more years of business. We have Eduardo Nene, 30 years working there, Maria Nene, 25 years, Pedro Padro, 38 years. As I said earlier, this, Mr. President, I'm sure you've had some of these sandwiches, and we have some samples in the back. This is an institution. This is a place where meetings take place, this is a place where people go to celebrate special days like birthdays and weddings and receptions and Dodger games and the whole range of civic life in the city. This is one of the woven threads throughout the city, both reflecting the historical, social, and cultural contributions of the Italian, Italian-American community, making this uniquely an American place to be. And so with that, we're here to celebrate East Side Market Italian Deli 90 years and looking forward to 90 more. So with that, let me introduce if you wanna.
Yeah, thank you.
Wicked salami.
Thank you.
Wicked salami.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. In keeping with the spirit of Italian-American Heritage Month here in the city of Los Angeles, throughout this country, it's appropriate that we honor Johnny and his wife Donna. It's an incredible story, I was just reminded by how they met. And they met at St. Peter's Church on Broadway. And how Johnny immigrated here from Badi to fulfill that American dream. And I see Donna and Johnny and his boys, and I see, what I see in you two, I see in my parents and my siblings, how they came to this city to offer prosperity, to provide for your family, and recognize that the Italians are the fifth-largest ethnic group in the country. And this month gives us an opportunity, thanks to Mr. Sadio, to recognize the East Side Deli for their contributions to our city. And I'm also reminded, when I was working off-duty for the L.A. Dodgers back in the day, I was assigned to the clubhouse. And when I checked into work, I went down to the clubhouse and I started smelling something that I normally smell in my mom's home, my mom's kitchen. And I turned to the clubhouse manager, I go, "Wow, who catered today?" And they said, "East Side Deli." So the East Side Deli, of course, they've been part of the extended L.A. Dodgers family for feeding our boys in blue. But also to, my message to Anthony and Rocco and Vito, I wanna thank you for keeping on with your family's tradition and ensuring that this family business doesn't die, as we've seen in other parts of the city. Not only in the, just, the restaurant business is so tough, but when you, when you see the next generation coming and raising the, and expanding the family business, it's in comfort, it's comforting to us as we ensure that these types of restaurants and establishments don't die off. So, and I'm hopeful in the next 10 years, we say an Italian centanni, 100 years of felicità, of happiness. And thank you, Gil, for being a part of the Italian Caucus. I know Mike Bonin is half-Italian. Our council president was supported by Italians in Cleveland. The, those, I know, I remember you telling us those Italians who stepped forward and helped you when you were being bullied in the schoolyard in Cleveland. And as we move on our way to establish a Little Italy in San Pedro, we, I've asked Johnny to see if they can create a South Side Deli, and he said absolutely not. The business is just so, it's troppo pesante, it's very, it's busy. So, but with that, we're happy to share, in my district, the fact that this month we've finally, we finally planted the flag and launched our Little Italy on Sixth Street. And it's gonna be a place where we're creating a piazza along with the Italians Association. So thank you, Gil, for allowing me to say a few words, and to the family, auguri centanni di felicità. And we are blessed and honored that you're here celebrating 90 years in our great city. Grazie mille. Thank you.
Let's give him a real round of applause. Thank you, guys.
I would like to say something, yeah. First off, it's an honor to be here, it's, I'm very grateful for this moment, for my family to be here with you guys. You know, it, my dad always tells everybody in his story, I wanted to put it in there real quick, how hard it was. It was very difficult for him. He struggled, he would work 14, 15 hours a day, and he would never see us when he got home. We were always asleep. So he sacrificed a lot to be where we're at today. But at the same time, without the, you know, the clientele and the customers that we have walking in that door every day, without them, we wouldn't be where we're at today. And especially our staff that we have here with us, they've been with us for over 25, some 38 years. They're a huge asset to the company. Without them, we wouldn't be where we're at. So we thank you, and we hope to also, I, one more thing, I also wanna make sure that it's important that Los Angeles is evolving. And it's becoming such an institution, you know, and, and I think, you know, it's very, very important that we remember the places that have been around for 40, 50 years because they're a huge contributor to this city, and I think that we need to remember them as we continue to evolve. Thank you.
Now, thank you. And thank you again, Mr. Sadio.
Thank you.
I mean, I'm drooling right now, I'm thinking about salami and mustard, just right now.
Right at Alpine and Fig is where it's at, and if you don't know that we've made the square there, so this got great signage for everybody. We did that about two years ago, and so you won't get lost. With great pride and a great privilege, great pride and a great privilege, we present this to you on behalf of a very grateful city. Thank you.
I would like to say thank you. Please remember, it's all work. Whatever you do in life, dedicate yourself and work very, very hard, and you'll succeed. Thank you.
Okay, let's move to item 14. Mr. O'Farrell, what I'm gonna do, if you would like, we'll go straight to public comment, and then I will kick it to you. So, Mr. City Attorney, why don't we start off, let's say, 20 minutes?
Very good.
Minute each?
Yes.
So I wanna start off with Chanel Pittman, Mac Shorty, Carlos Aguilar, Matt Fisher. Don, are you here, Don Garza? Come on down. If I've called your name, come on down, let's start off with your comments, folk. Mac, you can start. You're right there. Welcome.
Good morning. Once again, I wanna thank you guys for taking up this issue, we know it's hard. As a city, we all play a part in this issue. And as citizens, we need to stand behind our council staff and our city and our mayor and our elected officials. Not to just criticize, but to work hand in hand. Because at some point, we all know somebody that's either being evicted or being homeless. And to sit here and act like it's just a not-my-problem issue is wrong, there's no humanity to it. And we supposed to live in a just society. Well, when you look around, you have to ask yourself, what is just? Just is being concerned about the people that's sleeping on the bus stop. Just is being concerned about sleeping about the people on the streets. You know, I continue to wonder why people do what they do, but I just continue to keep you guys in prayer.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Okay. Hi, I'm Chanel Pittman. Thank you for going first because I did not want to. I'm gonna be 100% clear on this. I had to wake up and roll myself quickly, losing, missing the bus a couple of times to make sure I was here on time, but we desperately require a moratorium on evictions or 60-day notices extremely, like right now. We need it right now. You're in a situation where a law has been passed to protect people, and this whole no-fault eviction thing, and in order to keep people safe and prevent the homelessness crisis from ballooning even further, you guys, as our city council, are required now to tell these landlords that they are not allowed to give anyone any 60-day notices before this law takes effect. You know that. You know that's not fair. You know that's not fair, and you know that's not right. If you care about people not being unhoused, what you have to do is tell these landlords, "No. We need this moratorium." I want to be clear on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pittman. Yes, sir, please identify yourself.
Matt Fisher, I'd like to encourage you guys to do this. We really need it rolled back to March, though, because soon as Newsom started talking about this, thousands of people were thrown on the streets. Hundreds of those people are going to be homeless, now that those some people will die. This is life or death matters every time we don't think about these types of things. We need this on commercial properties as well. Right now, we have thousands of units of affordable housing coming in, but people can't even afford to buy their groceries. Thank you.
Thank you. Before the next speaker, if I could get Renee Moya, Cancela Al Mansour. Yes, go ahead.
Carlos Aguilar, Coalition for Economic Survival. CES and its members are in support of the item 14 that aims to restrict evictions. Governor Newsom signed AB 1482, the Tenant Protection Act of 2019, to prevent rent gouging and arbitrary evictions, but attorneys and owners are attempting to use the months leading up to its implementation to undermine its effectiveness by raising rents as much as they can and evicting as many families as possible before they believe they can be held accountable for their actions. In the wake of 1482, we have seen a surge of calls and visits to our tenants' rights clinics where residents tell us their lives have been upended and destabilized by getting 60-day notices to vacate or an unreasonable rent increase they cannot cover, telling them, "It's not illegal yet," or, "Next time you will be protected." Serves no one and makes us all complicit if we stay silent in the face of immoral and unjust, heartless attacks on tenants in good standing. Left unchecked, price gougers and massive victors will once again take advantage of our hard-working residents.
Thank you.
We urge the council to...
Thank you. Next speaker, thank you. Don, come forward.
Don Garza is a proud Skid Row resident. Again, because of the Mitchell case, I'm on the west side of Main Street. Ladies and gentlemen, this is pure greed and pure evil. When you say that I have to evict people before a certain date, or I can't raise the rent anymore, the only thing I can say is that is greed and that is pure evil. Because when you put people in the streets, you cause trauma, but you also cause death. Please, please, pass this retroactive ordinance. The people are saying March 15th or 16th. Thank you, Gil Sadio, for saying right now, not tomorrow. You knew this was coming. A lot of you knew this was coming, but why did we wait for it to start happening? Please pass this ordinance, or any ordinance that will save these people from becoming homeless.
Thank you. Okay, so before, before the next speaker, if I could call up Lastenia Chavez, Joshua Smith, Jose Torres, and Manuel Vasquez. Yes, sir, identify yourself, please.
Good morning, Renee Moya with AIDS Healthcare Foundation. I want to start off by just saying that I recognize the urgency with which this council has moved to enact emergency legislation. However, we have to recognize that as this ordinance is written at the moment, we will not be protecting sufficient numbers of tenants. We need retroactivity, at least to the 15th of March, which, which is when AB 1482 actually includes language for it. In, as an alternative, we are suggesting amendments to Section 49.98.3 to basically include a provision that says that if a final adjudication has not happened on, for a tenant facing an eviction, that we can actually protect them and keep them in their homes. We think that that is absolutely vital. We also think that Section 49.98.2 must be actually deleted and/or, or amended substantially. Why? Because tenants have been under extreme pressure to sign voluntary vacate agreements, in other words, cash-forkeys agreements. The city has already an ordinance to protect tenants and larso units from this type of pressure.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Please identify yourself. Yes. Yes.
My nombre es Manuel Antonio Vasquez. Vivo yo en la ciudad de Van Nuys, en un edificio de 75 unidades.
One moment.
Es una gran vergüenza.
My name is Manuel Antonio Vasquez. Vivo yo en la ciudad de Van Nuys. I live in Van Nuys. En la cual vengo yo porque he sido, recibí la notificación de 60 días de salojo. I received a 60-day notice to vacate the unit. De todas las personas que viven ahí, los 75 lo hemos recibido. Actually, there are 75 people in that structure, and we all, all of us received a notice. Todas las familias que vivimos ahí son familias que se encuentran niños que van a la escuela cerca del edificio. Most of the families have children, and they go to the school in the neighborhood. Están sufriendo tensiones, no comen bien los niños debido a que sus padres están muy nerviosos, que no pueden ni siquiera dormir. This is very stressful. It's stressful for the children. The children know what's going on, and they see that the parents are worried, and this is affecting the children as well. Este es un abuso del dueño de los apartamentos que han aumentado 55% de la renta. The property owners have abused their power to raise the rent to 55%. Venimos a pedirle ayuda a ustedes, señores. We are here to ask for your help. Así como ustedes piden el voto de nosotros. When it's election time, you come to us and you ask us to vote for you. Queremos tener la confianza que esta vez nos van a servir a los ciudadanos. So we want to make sure that you work for the people. Y vivamos dignamente.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good morning. Cancela Al Mansour, the Executive Director of the Housing Rights Center. And we have offices in Van Nuys and, and Koreatown. It was in our office in Van Nuys in which the 21 families walked in with 60-day notices. Let me tell you why some owners are doing this, to get rid of tenants who are low-income, who are poor, female families with children, disabled tenants, and tenants who are black and brown as well, tenants who they don't want, tenants who they feel are unworthy. These are the tenants that need to be protected. We need this ordinance to go be retroactive back to March 15th, if not even March 1st. We also need this ordinance to protect all tenants and all notices that have not been adjudicated yet, where the tenant is still in possession as well. We also need for this ordinance to delete the exemptions for certain housing, and those are Section 7, 8, 9, and 10. We do not need these properties to, to be exempted. We also need for tenants to be protected, also Section 8 tenants as well, because that law goes into effect as well.
Thank you.
We need this protection right now for tenants. Thank you.
And before the next speaker, if I could get Tom Villa, Rose Serna, please come up, Tom Villa, Rose Serna. Yes, ma'am, yes. Now to you, yes.
Thank you. My name is Lastenia Chavez, and I thank you for this opportunity. I pay right now $2,350,000 a month. I'm here to represent my son, my family, but mostly my son, who's under autism. I've had to file bankruptcy to afford to where I live. I, they raised my rent $500 in the last year, and I sacrifice, because this is his safe haven. This is where he feels safe, he's been there, this is all he knows. I've done everything they've asked me to do, I've been an excellent tenant, and just to be there with my son, and I got a 60-day notice anyway, that expires at the end of this month. Now, I'm, I'm, I'm used to this type of abuse, because it's a non-rent control, but now you're giving me hope. You've actually given me hope for not only my children, but all these kids with mental illness. Please don't take that away. Please don't back, don't back away.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Buenos dias, mis, Buenos dias, señoría, buenos dias, all of us of the concilio. My nombre es José Torres. Vivo en la ciudad de Huntington Park. I live in the city of Huntington Park. He venido porque cada año tengo el, el problema de cambiarme de ciudad. I am here because I have to move, every, every year I have to move to a different city. Es un, un problema cada vez, porque cada año tengo que aumentar 100 dólares y buscarlos porque yo soy retirado. This is a problem, because every year I have to, to come up with $100 more. I am, I am retired. Mi ayuda que me dan por mi retiro es de 900 dólares. I received only $900 for retirement. Y el problema es que cada vez que voy a cualquier otro lugar, me encuentro con el problema que tengo que pagar hasta 1,500 o 1,700 dólares. Sometimes I have to rent places that are even $1,500, and I only receive $900. Es un milagro que poder hacerlo, pero no se puede, porque no somos magos de Oz. Ya mi edad, no me dan trabajo por mi edad. I wish there were, I would be, I wish I could do magic and make it happen, and it's hard for me to get a job, because I'm a senior citizen now. Yo quisiera que nos ayudaran, a que detengan el control de renta, a una estabilidad de un 5%, que es lo que posible. Haciendo milagros podemos llegar a... Please make something, do something so that they don't raise the rent. I think that the minimum should be only 5%. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, before, before the next speaker, if I could get Joshua Smith, Rebecca Danielson, Olga Ford, and Diana Castellanos, yes.
Good morning. I'm Tom Villa. I'm a low-income senior. I've lived for the last 27 years at the Santa Fe Art Colony downtown Los Angeles. The new owner wants to raise my rent 120% for November and December. He's a wealthy real estate speculator. It would cause the tiniest ripple in his finances to take thousands of dollars from me, but it would be incredibly devastating for me. Please pass the moratorium.
Thank you, sir. Next, please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Rose Serna. I'm a resident of Highland Park. Good morning, council members. A lot of these 60-day notices were given in anticipation of AB 1482. I'm a single mom. My seven-year-old daughter and I received a 60-day notice in late July, and our vacate date was last Thursday. But we have not received any additional notices or unlawful detainer, because they are waiting on you to see your move and what you're going to do, so they know what to do. I urge you to help us save our homes. Please make this as retroactive as possible, keep our kids in their schools, and keep our communities strong by keeping them together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please identify yourself.
Hi, my name's Rebecca. My name's Rebecca. Today I represent myself, my neighbors at the Cambridge Court Apartments in Canoga Park, and also thousands of other tenants here today and otherwise affected by the mass 60-day evictions by multimillionaire developers and greedy landlords here in this L.A. city and region. Our communities demand the moratorium include these evictions become retroactive from March 15th, 2019, to December 31st, 2019, as these evictions are not only retaliatory, but they are unjust. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Hi, my name's Diana Castellanos, and I am an ACCM member, as well as a tenant at the Chelsea Court Apartments on 4040 Hoover. We're asking for the moratorium to be retroactive as of March 15, and we're asking the city attorney to please pay attention to us when we're talking. And to listen to what we have to say, because I know it's not affecting him, but it's definitely affecting all of us, all the tenants here, not just me. There's many, many tenants all across the Los Angeles area. So we're asking for you guys to really look back and do it retroactive, because, so that it, so that it takes in everybody in account, not just, you know, the people who have these 60-day notices, but people who have been having to pay rent increases since March or April of this year. Because I had a 100% increase as of April of this year. And nobody, we, we weren't able to, like, go back and, anyway. Thank you, have a great day.
Next, please. I think that's Ms. Ford.
Hello. My name is Olga Ford.
Yes, Ms. Ford.
And I'm here begging you all to please help us, because I'm disabled right now, and I, and my granddaughter, and my great-granddaughter lives with me. And it's very hard for the landlord to raise our rent that much high, $850 more. I was paying $1,337, now it went to $2,350. I'm not able to pay that. And we begging you all to just hear what we got to say, and please pass the emergency from 3 to 3/15/19. You know, we begging you all to do something and hear what we got to say, because right now, we cannot be on the street. You know, it's too much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Next.
Hello, my name is Joshua Smith. I'm with Housing is Human Right, part of the AIDS Healthcare Foundation and the Democratic Socialists of America, Los Angeles. And I'm here to implore you all, not only to pass the moratorium on evictions and 60-day notices in the wake of October 8th, the signing of 1482 by Governor Newsom, but also to roll that moratorium back to March 15th, the period which the 1482 ostensibly covers. Dozens of buildings, hundreds of tenants are being dealt 60-day notices and mass evictions, you know, all at once. This is a catastrophe, and y'all need to act urgently to prevent this from being a humanitarian crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could get Elena Pop and Christian Springer. We'll wrap it up here for now. Elena, go right ahead.
Good morning. As written, this ordinance has several flaws, not the least of which is the fact that it decontrols units. It doesn't exempt existing rent-controlled units, so you're basically creating this mess where we're not going to know what applies. You're going to temporarily take rent-controlled units and have them be under this, because they're not exempted, and you must exempt rent-controlled units from this law in order to avoid unintended consequences. The retroactivity is essential. If you don't want to use the March 15th date, then just make it applicable to any notice that has not been finally adjudicated. If you don't do that, Mr. Sadio, the tenants at Cinco Puntos are not protected, 70 families. The tenants at Santa Fe would be, and the tenants at Burlington would be. That is completely arbitrary. It makes absolutely no sense to protect some families and not others.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Kristen Springer, and as of May 8th, I'll be homeless and on the streets. I have an RSO apartment in Silver Lake. Tri-West Development has bought 12 buildings. That's 12 buildings, that's 40 people will be out of their apartments. You need to roll back to March 15th, but also protect you, RSO units in that. I'm disabled, I have no other alternative. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Okay. So we, we do have that public comment in the book, so I want to go to the debate, so I'm going to recognize Mr. O'Farrell to start off the conversation.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we're going to have is we're going to have Housing Committee, Investment Department, City Attorney's Office approach the table, so we can have this conversation, ask questions. They'll clarify some of the points and questions that we've heard from those gathered today. So, colleagues, AB 1482, introduced by David Chu and signed by the governor two weeks ago today, the Tenant Protections Act of 2019, addresses a key cause of our state's affordable housing crises by preventing rent gouging and arbitrary evictions. The act becomes effective January 1st of this coming year, establishing the strongest statewide law in the country to protect renters in currently non-rent-stabilized housing. In the interim, until the state's protections go into effect, this council wants to do everything we possibly can to protect as many of our renters as possible from no-fault evictions. But as we know, the state has put limitations on what we can do through Costa Hawkins and the Ellis Act. Given that, we're looking into every possible avenue to provide protections to our renters, and that is why we're here today. I'd like to thank our city attorney and city attorney's staff for crafting this ordinance so quickly, but also through the lens of great scrutiny in terms of what... in terms of what is legally defensible. I really want to thank the city attorney's office for that and working with H-Sid and Rushmore-Cervantes office for the collaboration to get us to this point. And I, to my knowledge, no other city in the state is so far as doing this, although they would be wise to, because we have this window, this two-and-a-half-month window until the law goes into effect, because the state did not enact their own emergency clause. So I want to thank everyone who made time today to come in and give your testimony. We all get a sense of the gravity of this emergency and this is just the people who are able to make the time to come into council today. So we know that you speak for many, many more people across the city. So I want to thank all of you for that. And so what we, sure. So I'd like Dave Michelson from the City Attorney's Office and Rushmore-Cervantes and your teams assembled here. I'll start off with a few questions and then we'll go around the horseshoe. Starting with City Attorney's Office, to clarify a few points, can you explain how this ordinance will help people who have already received eviction notices? No matter when they receive those eviction notices?
Good morning, council members. David Michelson with the Office of the City Attorney here with two of my colleagues, Mei Mei Chang and Noreen Vincent. We're pleased to be here this morning to try to answer any questions that you may have. As Councilmember O'Farrell mentioned, I think it was last Tuesday, the council adopted the motion requesting our office to prepare and transmit the draft ordinance. Within about 24 or 36 hours, we prepared it and transmitted it. Our office recognizes the importance of this issue and we moved as quickly as probably we've ever done. The ordinance follows true-to-form in terms of what was requested by council in the motion. It provides a new level of eviction protection for tenants on properties that were built prior to January of 2005. That's what council requested. If this ordinance is adopted today, signed by the mayor, it also includes an urgency clause which would allow this ordinance to go into effect upon the Clerk's Office publication, which would be ideally even before the end of this week, maybe even as early as tomorrow. Once this law is in effect, it would provide a number of levels of protection and the best way to explain it for purposes of notice of eviction is maybe by way of example. The law would speak to any eviction process that's still underway. So an example would be if my landlord gave me a 60-day notice to evict 40 days ago. In 20 days from now, that notice will have run its full 60 days and I need to evict. I need to vacate, excuse me. If I do not vacate, the landlord can bring a judicial proceeding and lawful detainer to get a court to order me to leave and then the sheriff to get me to ultimately vacate. So in my example, again, the 60-day notice to evict was served 40 days ago. I got 20 days to go. If this new city law goes into effect in the next few days, that will give me, the tenant, a new level of protection I did not have before. It will essentially stop this eviction in its tracks. And if the landlord tries to then go to court and get that unlawful detainer, I as the tenant will be able to tell the judge, wait a minute, the city of LA adopted this law and it's an affirmative defense judge, I as the tenant, I'm going nowhere. And the judge should agree with that based on this new law. So the law does have a somewhat backward-looking view, whether it's a 60-day notice to evict or a 30-day notice, as long as that eviction notice has yet to fully run its full number of days and this law is in effect, the law will provide protection. So sort of that provides some level of explanation as to what this law does. Certainly turn to my colleagues, Noreen and Mei Mei, to see if they want to add anything. I'll also say, we intentionally modeled this ordinance very closely on what the state of California has just done with AB 1482. So much of the, many of the provisions you see in here are pretty much verbatim what the state of California provided, for obvious reasons. It's best, we believe legally, to be in lockstep. And again, this city will have gone probably farther than any other municipality, as Councilmember O'Farrell has mentioned, by providing this early protection for the next two months, even before the state law kicks in on January 1st with respect to eviction.
Question, a follow-up question on that, Mr. Michelson. If a tenant has received a 60-day notice that expired, we have cases where tenants received notices months ago, but a lawful detainer has not yet been filed, will they be protected?
So under this law, once the eviction notice has run its number of days, so if it's a 60-day notice of eviction and the 60 days has come and gone, the landlord will have a legal argument that the landlord has exercised its right, his or her right, under state law and under their lease to complete that eviction. And if the tenant is a holdover and refuses to leave, then the landlord's gotta go to court, of course, to, through an unlawful detainer process, to get a court order. But importantly, the eviction process will have been completed because the number of days will have come and gone.
A lot of, a lot of testimony just now was about that March 15th date. Can you please explain the city's interpretation of what that retroactive piece in the March 15th date means in the state law and how that could apply here?
So that's a very good question. The state law recently signed by the governor does not in and of itself provide retroactivity, sort of in the traditional sense of that word. It's our understanding what the state law provides is the following. With perspective, with respect to evictions, the state law provides new eviction rules regarding no-fault eviction that is applicable on and after January 1st of 2020. The state law does not unravel or unwind any evictions that have already been completed in 2019. So that is not in my, in our perspective in the City Attorney's Office, a retroactive application. The new law, if the state starts on January 1st and provides this new level of eviction protection under the state law starting January 1st. You all, if you'll be acting today, are providing some gap protection over the next two months. With respect to rent, the state law does not have a retroactive application that would require a landlord, for instance, to return any rent that the landlord had received from the tenant in 2019 that was other lawfully, that was otherwise lawfully required to be paid by the landlord. So again, under the state law, landlords are not required to return rent paid in 2019. If the law said that, the state law, that would be retroactive. What the state law says, however, come January 1st, it is possible, depending on the scenario, that the prospective rent that the landlord's gonna charge starting January 1st would be pegged on the dollar amount paid in March 15th of 2019. That's not retroactive, that's just a benchmark the state is requiring to be applied by a landlord moving forward on January 1st. And that's only if the scenario, in terms of the amount of rent that the landlord's charging in 2019 were to be applicable. So again, not a retroactive application.
So the rent charged in March of this year would have to then be the same rent that is charged in that particular unit beginning January 2020, regardless of the increase that might have happened since March 15th? Is that accurate?
I think that is accurate. So for instance, if you're my landlord and my rent in February of 2019 was $100 and in April you've increased it to $1,000, come January 1st of 2020, depending on the scenarios and the formula, I as the tenant may have to pay the, instead of $1,000, the $100 with some escalation that the state law provides for, but nowhere near the $1,000. But that's perspective come January 1st.
So the state law does not provide for a reimbursement, but the state law does require to go back to the March 15th rent?
Potentially, that's, 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 that is the correct way to say it.
That's how we interpret this. And, Mr. President, I'll ask one more question, then I'll sit and we can keep going around. Now, a claim was made that this jeopardizes our current rent stabilization ordinance, pre-1979. Now, I don't see it that way at all. I think this is completely silent on our current RSO established before 1979. Is that accurate or are there aspects to this, that, this emergency moratorium that you feel could have implications for our current RSO?
No, we see the world the way you do, council member, that this ordinance appropriately includes RSO units. We do not see a legal problem in doing that, to the contrary, quite frankly. The motion from City Council last Tuesday spoke to all units built before January of 2005. That includes RSO. We wrote the ordinance that way to include the RSO. There are indeed some scenarios by which an RSO tenant, over the next two months, would, will benefit from these added protections that are in this ordinance. And so in essence, an RSO tenant will get the most protection available under either the RSO or under this, or under this new law during the next two months. So we would encourage the council to keep the RSO units in the fold.
All right, thank you. Colleagues, have at it, and then I'll rise again for more questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Harris Dawson. Mr. Sadio.
Let me, colleagues, you recall this story, I've brought this to your attention over the past year. We've been struggling to represent tenants at Hillside Via in Chinatown. And I worked with their attorney about the possibilities of us working together to help them be able to continue to afford affordability. One thing I found very interesting, though, was that their attorney was very cued in on the legislative process. I found this to be unusual, but what I found was that they were actually tracking the bills in Sacramento and what might be the impact on their client's ability to raise rents. And so in fact, I know from my, our conversations with their attorney that they have been tracking this legislation. And that while it is not the norm, I would not suggest that all landlords or apartment building owners are devious in this way. In fact, I would say maybe up to, you know, 98, 99% are not. But there are in fact landlords, and we've been dealing with them, who are simply looking to exploit this circumstance and maximize profit for their client. And they are indifferent to the vulnerabilities of the tenants and the impact that their greed has on the, both tenants specifically and on the stability of our city. And so I want to know if we are prohibited from looking back to 315-19 in terms of applying this, because I want to make sure that even one tenant for me is too much and that we should not be permitting nor signaling to any landlord that they should try to exploit the circumstance and place tenants in vulnerable situations. And so one question is, are we prohibited from looking back to 315-19? And then the next question obviously is, how do we ensure with absolute certainty that we are protecting each and every tenant from March 15, 2019, knowing as we do that in fact there are landlords, building owners and their attorneys who have been programming around this law and positioning themselves to take advantage of tenants at this moment? Thank you.
Very well said. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Sadio. I guess I would start off by noting that the state of California, state legislature and the governor had the opportunity to go down that same path and they did not and there might very well have been legal concerns that might have motivated, in addition to policy issues, the state legislature and the governor to act the way they did in terms of the legislation that ultimately was adopted. As I stated a minute ago, where an eviction has already run its course and the tenant has been evicted and frankly, someone else often is now living in that unit, having a law, local law or even a state law, but certainly the local level, try to unravel that and the ramifications associated with that presents legal concerns, no question about it. And I think I'll leave it at that. And Noreen, do you want to add something?
I was just going to indicate that we believe that we've done as much as we can to protect individuals in the city, certainly providing for eviction protection. The rent, according to state law, will be rolled back to what it was in March of 2019. And I think one of the concerns in terms of the way in which we drafted was to make sure that we had an ordinance that could withstand any potential legal challenge. While we always have a severability clause within our ordinances and so our expectation would be that if a court were to invalidate certain provisions, that it would not invalidate the entire ordinance. But I think if we start going down a road where we're looking at retroactivity, we run the risk that this could be challenged and potentially set aside, which is something that nobody wants to see. We want to give the maximum protection we possibly can to the tenants in terms of no-cause eviction during this period of time before the state law becomes effective.
Thank you, Noreen. I'll also reiterate what I said a moment ago. The law that was prepared and drafted pursuant to council's request and transmitted has provisions in it that have a look-back feature. So again, if someone's got that notice of eviction that was served for 60 days, that was served on them even 55 days ago, this law will have protections for them, assuming the law is adopted and signed by the mayor and is published quickly, thanks to the urgency clause. So there is some level of backward-looking protection. And for all I know, there are some owners who believe that that's overly aggressive and legally flawed and we may be fighting those owners in court. And we will do that willingly in terms of defending this ordinance vigorously with the look-back that it has. But going beyond that, as I mentioned, would be that much more legally problematic.
So, Mr. President, let me, so I appreciate the point about severability, I get that. And I also appreciate that there were limits of this legislation. In other words, the state, looking at the entirety of the state, wrote its legislation and it's always a concern that we have that we, the locals, have a better understanding of what's happening here in our communities as their local representatives. And I think that's where we're at at this moment. That in fact, that there was a broad brush, the state has created policy that sets a baseline, but not the limits of what it is that we can do for our locals. And so, given, given my experience with Hillside Via specifically and their attorney and knowing that they've been tracking this legislation for the year, I'm not satisfied yet that we're doing all that we can. In fact, it seems to me that, that we would want to, we, the locals, would want to augment the state's law and build upon it to make sure that every tenant is protected, that we go back and that, at a minimum, given the nature of this legislation and what we're talking about here, that at a minimum, that any matter that hasn't been finally adjudicated has to be swept up into our look-back, but also that we would even look back to final adjudications because if we have bad actors, and again, we're only talking about 1%, but that 1% impacts hundreds, if not thousands, of tenants. And if we're looking at that 1% and we can look back and challenge them, then I think we're duty-bound to do that. I think that this is the charge of us as the council and you as our attorneys, for us to go back and to maximize this, given, given that this is such a small population, that we're looking at really extreme cases. But this is the time for us to really act in defense of those rare circumstances because we know that those who have taken these actions have done so, or we start with the premise that they've done so, looking at this legislation. And so I would ask that we, that we do that, that we amend this, that we understand that the limits, that we... limits, that we make sure that the intent is clear, that not one tenant will be displaced, victimized, made vulnerable as a result of this proposal.
Mr. Bonin. Okay, okay. You guys have to let us now discuss this.
If I might, very quickly, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bonin. Responding to Councilmember Sadio, we have been working with your staff in the last 12 hours or so about the concept of adding an additional sentence to Section 49.98.3, a sentence that would read, "A tenant is not required to vacate during the time an eviction is being adjudicated." So, if it's the council's will to add that sentence, so be it.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Michelson, for that last point, because it gets me to where I was going. I understand why we can't do the broad, comprehensive, sweeping look-back, but I was struck by the point that Ms. Pop was making and that Mr. Sadio was teasing out about defining our protection more broadly so that it at least is covering the people who are still in their tenancies fighting out an eviction. So, you suggested that we could legally do that.
Yeah, that sentence that I just read in the microphone, if it's the council's will, could be added, and we will approve that as deformed illegality.
So, I...
Okay, okay, okay. Come on. Okay, okay, okay. Let us, this is a very, very important conversation. Please let us continue.
So, Mr. President, colleagues, I would so move that we do just that, as Mr. Michelson outlined, to cover those whose cases are still being adjudicated, those who are still in their units. Mr. Sadio, seconds. The second thing I wanted to ask about, because I take the concerns that Ms. Pop raised very seriously, I've known her for 20 years. I understand that there's a difference of opinion about what this impact would be on our RSO ordinance and the protections we have. And we have a school of thought, and we think it doesn't. Ms. Pop has a school of thought where she has a concern, and she deals with the folks who challenge this stuff all the time and that 1% that tries to do whatever it can to get tenants out. Given that there is at least a school of thought that is different, makes me feel that there could be some challenge or adjudication of it. Could we add a sentence in here that says, "No provision of this article should be construed to abrogate or repeal any right enjoyed by any tenant under the city's current RSO ordinance," just so that it's absolutely clear?
Dave Michelson, again, with City Attorney. That sentence could be added, clearly. It'd be a belt and suspenders, because we believe that the ordinance is currently drafted, does not present that problem for RSO tenants, but absolutely, that sentence could be added.
And I would so move, and Mr. Blumenfield, seconds. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Corretts.
President, I have to ask a question of the City Attorney regarding constructive evictions and whether this addresses that. And that being the example of a unit that's going for $1,500 and the tenant is struggling to pay that, but they're doing it, and the landlord decides to add $5,000 a month to their rent. That's not really a rent increase, that really is a literal eviction. And they wouldn't even be asking for market, which might be 2,500. They'd be asking for something which they wouldn't intend to rent it to the next person at, but that would be a way just to get them out. Have we addressed that? And if it comes into conflict with Costa-Hawkins, I would think the intent of Costa-Hawkins was to give landlords a reasonable rate of return. This wouldn't be that. This would be just a trick to be sure they can get a tenant out and then rent it for a lower amount to the next person. Is there no way to address that, because we know this is going on as well?
Thank you, Councilmember Corretts. So, the ordinance provides a provision, which I think you spoke about last Tuesday, concerning constructive eviction. So, that has been weaved into this ordinance and will rely upon the body of state law with respect to constructive eviction. So, that protection is built into the ordinance. But if a landlord is otherwise lawfully increasing rent, under state and local law, the city's ability to stop them is obviously very limited, whether it's Costa-Hawkins or what have you.
So, I'm not clear, because you've told me yes and no in the same sense. So, how did we weave it into the rules and what would happen with my example? I mean, I served with Jim Costa in the state legislature. I can tell you he didn't intend for $1,500 a month units to rent for $6,500 because someone gave that kind of an increase.
Right. There are two separate issues that you're referring to. One is constructive eviction, which we have weaved into the ordinance, as I've mentioned. But in terms of a rent increase, if a landlord is otherwise lawfully increasing the rent, while it may be offensive and objectionable morally and ethically, if the landlord otherwise is lawfully raising the rent and the tenant fails to pay that rent, that is going to be grounds for an eviction.
So, how do we weave it into the ordinance if it doesn't apply?
Again, if the rent is otherwise lawfully being imposed, there is no way to weave it into the ordinance.
Then, how can you deal with a constructive eviction, because that's essentially what it is?
Well, there's all types of constructive eviction, clearly. Inappropriate means and mechanisms by which landlords create such pain on a tenant that the tenant's leaving. But let me actually hand this over to Noreen.
I think, in the context of state law, constructive eviction is when the premises are in a condition such that the tenant can no longer live there, so there would be habitability issues. And so, it would provide for an affirmative defense for a tenant who had to leave the property because of the condition. So, it would be basically a defense. I think that for tenants where we're now sort of, you know, trying to, with this ordinance, bridge the gap, when state law does become effective, there will be protections for rent increases. And as I said, the rents will be rolled back to March of 2019. I don't know that there's anything that we can do to prevent a rent increase, but effectively, since if the rent is increased, there would have to be at least a 30- or 60-day notice. And since nobody is going to be evicted during this period of time, other than for cause, there are some protections that do flow from this ordinance, not complete protection, but as much as we could give.
So, it sounds like most of the folks in this circumstance might be saved by the rollback unless they're somehow evicted for non-payment of rent before the end of the year.
Exactly. That's exactly right, Councilman. Rushmore Cervantes, I'm also joined by Anna Ortega, the Director of the Rent Stabilization Ordinance. We're currently working with Councilwoman Nuri Martinez to address that other piece of the pie, if you will, relative to this period before January 1st, when 1482 becomes the law. And of course, having the no-fault eviction in place is critical. The other piece of it is landlords potentially, as you stated, raising the rent significantly for a forced eviction for non-payment. And thus, where this other program that we're going to be bringing forward shortly would potentially address that during the short period of time while this new law is taking effect, because any increase in the rents now, again, will have to revert back to that March 15, 2019 date, so the base of the clock will be reset. So, at least during that short period of time, perhaps we can address that. It doesn't necessarily mean that temporary assistance is going to be in perpetuity, but just for that short period of time. And again, we'll be coming back at a separate time to discuss that with Councilwoman Martinez's efforts.
And how does the state law deal with the retroactivity? Is there any kind of a rebate for overpayment in that circumstance, or is it just look-forward?
To the contrary, state law really does not require a repayment of the rents that have been charged.
So, just prospectively, starting in January, it would go back to what it was in March 2019?
That is correct. And they have the ability to raise the rent at 5% plus Consumer Price Index, possibly, which is right now 4%. So, it could be a total of 9% is the max.
Which would obviously be a lot better than some people that are getting 300% rent increases to get them out. Okay. Well, it sounds like it's pretty well-covered, so I appreciate that.
Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I thank Councilwoman Merrill Farrell for bringing this forth, and I thank the City Attorney and H-SIT for working so quickly on this. I want to thank Councilmembers Sadio and Mike Bonin for increasing the folks who are in adjudication. That's exactly the same amendment I wanted to add as well, and I fully, fully support that. For rent increases, so let me, when is the second motion authored by Councilwoman Martinez coming before us?
Quickly.
Quickly, yeah.
We're working on it right now. We are actually, we've been, Councilman Rue, we're actually actively working with Councilwoman Martinez's staff, and as of this morning, we're still discussing this. So, we anticipate something very quickly. We understand that the timing is critical, and we want to come forward very quickly with a program for the council to deliberate on.
So, obviously, that's equally important, if not more important. So, the question I had, though, was, so if we could prevent the rent increases, or can we prevent the rent increases, or put a moratorium, we can't? So, basically, all we can do is wait for it to kick in on January 1st, and on January 1st, it'll go back to the rate in March, plus the 5% or cost of living increases, right? Is there anything we can do in the City Council or lobbying the state or asking the state to do to have some sort of rebate or some sort of prevention or capping, or what is there, is there any kind of, because I know you're working on it now, but is there anything we could do?
Quit, quit. Go on, Mr. Rue.
Well, in essence, 1482 was an anti-gouging bill, and obviously, there's going to have to be a starting point. The state legislation did not contemplate any type of moment in time to be able to prevent such gouging until such time the law does take place. And I think what the mayor and council collectively are doing here between this before you now and potentially covering rent increases for a short period of time is doing what we can, short of having some sort of changed emergency trailer bill to be able to amend 1482 to provide some form of a rebate or moratorium.
Okay. Well, we'll be looking forward to that, and I'm just going to reiterate what everybody else said and what we said before. And as we said last week, and as I said, you know, choosing to evict tenants because, you know, a renter protection law is coming is nothing short of shameful. And these people, families and homes are not commodities. But unfortunately, I wish this was something new, and this is a surprising behavior, but it's not. It's been happening way too frequently, and I've seen this in my district personally, whether it's 6565 Fountain in Hollywood, 2965 Waverly Drive in Silver Lake, the Cove Apartments in Los Feliz. There's been too many apartments where long-term residents are pushed out by greed. So, enough is enough. I'm so happy that this motion is coming for us today, but we need more. We can't stop here. We can't stop here. You know, we need Ellis Act reform. We need more renter protections. And we need to make, and we need to make Los Angeles City where it's possible to rent an apartment, raise a family, and be safe from displacement once and for all. So, I expect nothing but a unanimous vote, and I know all the colleagues are in support. And I thank you guys for making this so urgent and bringing this so fast in front of us.
Mr. Price. Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm too proud to join with my colleagues on this measure, and special thanks to the staff for working so hard to turn this around as quickly as possible. You know, the comments that we heard from our neighbors and friends, I think have been eloquent and unequivocal. They want relief, and they want relief now. I think many of us feel that certainly one important answer to this problem is more housing. We just need more housing, more affordable housing. But until we have that, I think it's important that we support this motion today, as amended by my colleagues, to make sure that we provide the relief we can to those who need it now. Two quick questions. One, if this measure is signed today and published, if it's signed by the mayor and published today, how soon would it take effect?
Because it has an urgency clause, as long as council adopts it today with no less than 12 votes and unanimous, and the mayor signs later today and publishes right away, it could be in effect literally as early as tomorrow, certainly by Thursday.
And then, what steps are we going to take, and we have to publicize this? What steps are we taking to publicize and to inform tenants and property owners of the impact of this law?
Certainly, Councilman, we will do everything we can to disseminate this new law, certainly through our social media, working with the Apartment Owners Association, the renter associations, our family store centers, senior centers, everywhere across the board. The total number of units citywide is 138,000 units that are impacted by this new law. We could even do a mailer if necessary to ensure that people are aware of their rights.
I think we should use all available means to inform everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Blumenfield.
Thank you. I certainly rise in strong support of this proposal with the amendments, and I join all my colleagues in urging that we do everything we can. What's happening out there is shameful in terms of the evictions. Now, I had a question, though, because I'm, this is really important, what we're doing, and it will prevent these unlawful evictions from happening in the immediacy. But we still have the problem with the situation of an unscrupulous landlord who's going to just jack up the rent, and then the person can't pay that, and then that is a lawful, technically a lawful way that you can evict somebody. And I know we're all struggling with this, because, you know, the Costa-Hawkins Act specifically prohibits us from doing rent control. Otherwise, we would have done it as a council already. We would have done rent control. We wouldn't need the state to do this. We would have done it, and we would have done it quicker. But my question is, is there something under perhaps the price gouging laws whereby, in an emergency, I know you cannot raise the prices more than 10%. Is there something that we can do to be creative, to say that we're in a shelter emergency or something like that, at least to put some sort of gouging cap on this interim period?
Thank you, Councilmember Blumenfield. We in the City Attorney's Office, working with our colleagues over in H-SIT, are literally overturning every stone we can find to try to find means and mechanisms to address the problem that you and your colleagues have been talking about. And the avenue that you just mentioned, potentially using price gouging laws in an application of a state of emergency, is something that we're looking at.
Correct. Because obviously, there was an earthquake or fire, there's a declared emergency, that law kicks in. You can't go more than 10%. But this is clearly also an emergency. It's a shelter emergency, and it's one that may be brought on by the legislation. But I would certainly want to make that argument, that if we have any control over declaring that an emergency, that we look into that as a possibility for us to use to at least enact the price gouging law, which is not as good as the state law, which is 5% plus CPI, but it is 10%, which is a heck of a lot less than what people are being charged by the unscrupulous landlords who are really just trying to kick people out. Thank you.
Ms. Martinez.
President, and thank you, Mr. O'Farrell and Mr. Price, for being the champions on this issue. I did want to address the comment that Mr. Rue had made in terms of one of my motions coming forward. We're working with you, Mr. Cervantes, as you know, and my staff. We would hope to have this to council by the end of this week, if not early next week. And the sense of urgency has to do with a lot of my comments from last week, the fact that we have families who are not only dealing with hike increases, but also on the verge of eviction, because the no-fault eviction ban also doesn't preclude them from just evictions. And a just eviction, not being able to pay your rent, is justification enough for any landlord to evict you. And so, what's happening in my district and in countless other communities is that you've had entire buildings where their rents have increased by 25%, 50%, 100% sometimes. You have examples of, like, some of my constituents here from Van Nuys, that this happened as soon as the bill was signed into law. So, what's happening is that you have people in the interim not being able to make that 100% rent increase, and there is no... 100% rent increase, and there is no protecting them. And so what I intend to do, and my motion's not up for discussion this morning, but what we intend to do is create a rent relief program for folks to be able to stay in their homes until this law takes effect on January 1st. And what we need to ensure, what we need to ensure is that people are giving that extra $200, $500 a month to be able to stay in their place. Not only is this unjust to do this to folks that are doing everything right, they get up every morning, go to work, you know, they take their kids to school, they come back, they do everything humanly possible to stay in their homes. Not only is this unjust to rent, to increase rent on these folks, but it's also cruel to do this right before the holidays. Right before the holidays, these landlords have figured out a way to, you know, rent gouge thousands and thousands of renters in our city, and so we need to ensure that we have the right programs in place so that we can get relief to these folks as soon as possible. So, Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. Price, thank you very much for bringing this forward. I hope we can all support it and move forward on this. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lee.
As, you know, as being the new person here, I, you know, I know that most of you don't know me very well, and people in the audience, and even people around this horseshoe. I've always been a little hesitant to ever tell businesses what they can or cannot do with their own investments. But I've also said recently that these are different times. These are different times when my counsel, my colleague, Councilman Bloomingfield, said that if we were to have an earthquake tonight, and we had people on the streets, we would act differently. We would suspend certain laws, we would make it easier for us to build more, and I've never understood why we do not treat this as a crisis that it deserves. I know, I know our partners up in the state have always had good intentions by enacting this assembly bill, but unfortunately, there are, you know, unintended consequences, like many things that the state passes on to us, and this happens to be one of them. I hate that we, you know, I want to be careful that we don't categorize all landlord owners as somehow being, you know, the millionaire developers. I happen to have a lot of mom and pop who worked their entire lives to make an investment in four and five units, and to make these investments that, you know, that they worked hard for. But now they're facing this bill staring them at the face, and they're feeling a little scared, and even they may be making some of these decisions that are affecting so many people and putting people on the street. So while I am always hesitant, you know, we have to do more to help increase the housing stock, because basic economics will bring prices down. If we have the demand but not the supply, we have to increase the supply. And as I've always said, we need to start looking at all the different fees and regulations that this body, this state enacts on people trying to build more homes, because it is impossible to build affordable housing with all these fees and regulations. We, as a government, need to be part of the solution. Too often, we say that the burden should just be placed on businesses when there's a societal issue, and that is not fair. We, as a government, need to start looking at some of the fees and regulations that are causing this so we can build more affordable housing, and start making it more predictable in the time amount that needed to build these homes and build these apartment buildings. And so I want to thank Councilman O'Farrell. This is something with, again, just unintended consequences that the state does very often. They pass us a wide-ranging bill, and then we have to deal with the problems, and this is creating a problem that we need. This is going to affect in January 1st, and unfortunately, too many landlords are now pushing people out of their homes. So, thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, everyone, again, for this great discussion. I want to again thank all the advocates for being here, for elevating the issue, because when I look out and I see everyone who is in great distress because of this rent gouging, just-cause eviction nonsense, by the greediest of greedy landlords that give owning multiple-family properties a really bad name, then clearly, we have to do something about it, because it is, it is expressing itself across the city. We constantly are bumping up against two state laws that are harming our ability to give renters further protections, and they are the Ellis Act, and they are Costa-Hawkins. So I invite anyone to travel up to Sacramento with me for a third time, to keep lobbying for a change on those two state laws, and I will go up there, and many of my colleagues here are doing the same thing, and we will, we need relief from the state so that we can effectuate better laws locally. So I want to thank everyone. I think on this day, we're all on the very same page. We want to protect the most vulnerable among us. Just a few quick points of clarification, and then I'm going to wrap up. It is my understanding that after an adjudication for an eviction has taken place, the county sheriff's department then steps in in terms of making sure that an apartment or a unit is vacated if someone chooses not to follow, you know, the results of the court. Will the sheriff's department be notified of this emergency ordinance so that there's widespread knowledge of what the city of Los Angeles has done? Will there be a memo that will be widely circulated that will feed into their communication process?
Yes, we can certainly do that for the city.
Okay, I think that's really important. And the other piece is this, advocates, activists, I'm going to ask for your help. We're working with H-Sid on putting together a communication piece, a Q and A. We'll get it, we'll get it translated in multiple languages. We will have stacks and stacks of these made. We'll do it electronically and every other which way. We're going to depend on you to help us get the word out, so that there's a, that greater trauma, further trauma, just because landlords don't even know this ordinance is in effect, that prospective evictions never take place, and causing further worry and trauma, as Nuri says, Ms. Martinez said, during the holiday season. We do not need that to happen, and you all can help us with that. Thank you. So I fully support the prohibition of evictions, not yet adjudicated amendment. I think that's a great one. So.
Okay, come on, let's keep it down. The sooner we vote on this, the sooner we can make it happen.
We're going to get there, folks. We're going to get there. So, Mr. Bonin, if you're the mover of that, then I second it happily, or, Mr. Sadio, if you're the mover of that, I second it, if you co-introduced it. The other piece is the clause, the clause asserting that this ordinance, this emergency ordinance, does not adversely affect the city's current RSO. We'll make that very, very clear and implicit also in this emergency ordinance, and I would second that as well. I think those are two great addictions, additions. Well, we're addicted to helping renters. That's what we are here. So, so, and furthermore, to the city attorney's office and H-Sid, I would recommend that we have a report back on the, Mr. Bloomingfield's point, that I think is a very great point that he raised, in terms of the 10% shelter emergency limit, because I feel that perhaps we could make findings, that we could make a case for invoking that, so if we could get a report back on what exactly that is about. I think we really need to be very receptive to any and all ideas, again, that don't jeopardize what we're trying to do here, and that is help folks who are in great distress and financial harm, and, you know, near homelessness, if you will. So we need to just keep looking in every direction we possibly can during this two-and-a-half month, half-month window, and then we need to take the long view. Ellis Act and Costa-Hawkins. So, colleagues, I urge an "I-vote," and I call the question.
So, councilmembers, I apologize, Dave Michelson, the city attorney. I'm looking at the amending motion brought in by Councilmember Sadio, which was speaking to the language that I had mentioned into the microphone. We would, the city attorney's office would not recommend the language in the amending motion. Instead, we would recommend the language, as I read it, into the microphone. Let me read both. The motion says.
Please be quiet out there.
Thank you. The amending motion says, "This article shall not apply to tenancies where the tenant remains in possession, and the notice required under the California Civil Code, Section 1946.1, has not been adjudicated." With all due respect, I think that language is confusing and could potentially lead to troublesome consequences. Instead, the language we recommend would be, "A tenant is not required to vacate during the time an eviction is being adjudicated." I think that's more straightforward and frankly, more simple. Again, a tenant is not required to vacate during the time an eviction is being adjudicated.
Please be quiet, everyone.
Come on, let's keep it down. Whoa, 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 wait. Let's keep it down, please.
So if we could pause for a moment, my colleague is going to go talk with the maker of that motion, Councilmember Sadio's office, because we're a little confused by it.
Okay, what, I need a verbal clarification. Dave, we need a verbal clarification, so if you can. Could you go back to the table? One moment. No, 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 one moment. Okay, what I'm going to do is take a two-minute, two-minute recess to try to work out this language issue. Two minutes, but please, please.
Ms. Pop, would you please stop shouting?
Let us, let us keep it down. Just two minutes. All right. Members, let's go, let's return. Okay, if we could get the city attorney's office and the housing, everybody return to the center table. Members? Okay, let us return to the center table. Members, take your seats. Okay, members, take your seats. Members, take your seats. Members, take your seats. Members, take your seats. Okay, Mr. City Attorney? Or Mr. Sadio?
I think council's prepared to read the amendment into the record, and we'll be fine with that, sir.
Okay, let's hear what the revised amendment is, the clarification.
We have two amendments, one from Councilmember Sadio, one from Councilmember Bonin. Let's start with the one from Councilmember Sadio. Noreen.
Yes, the motion is now going to read Section 49.98.3, Section 1. This article shall apply to tenancies where the tenant remains in possession and the eviction lawsuit has not been adjudicated.
Okay, the other amendment?
No, 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 no. That's the new second sentence. The section should say, "This article shall apply to tenancies where the tenant remains in possession, and the period of notice required under California Code Civil Procedure, Section 1946.1, is not expired, and, yeah, this is.
Read it.
That's what we.
I stand corrected. Let's go with the one sentence. Sorry, I.
So, let's clarify the one sentence. Come on, guys. We just worked it out. Clarify the one sentence.
We'll read it one more time, just to make sure.
Just read it one more time.
Okay, this is Section 49.98.3. Section 1 reads as follows. "This article shall apply to tenancies where the tenant remains in possession, and the eviction lawsuit has not been adjudicated."
All right, so now, Madam Clerk, we are voting on this as amended.
There's a second amendment, which. Councilmember Bonin, second amendment. Yes, you've got the piece of paper. Would you please read the second amendment, too, that Mr. Bonin? Would you please read the second amendment, too, that Mr. Bonin-
Um-
And what section it's in?
Let me see where it's going to go.
It goes right here, at the end of this one.
So, this is going to be added to Section 49.98.2, prohibition on evictions. At the end of Paragraph A, there's going to be an addition which reads as follows. "This section does not in any way adversely affect or abrogate the rights of tenants under the rent stabilization ordinance."
Okay, Mr. Kocorian?
It's, you know, it's a little difficult doing this kind of on the fly, as people are negotiating things on the side of the ropes. I'd like to understand now, from the city attorney that represents the city, whether the motion that is before us now with this revised language is defensible against claims of unconstitutionality. Because the original language that the city attorney had proposed was recommended to the council as being constitutionally defensible language. And we now have language that's been worked out in the last five minutes with discussion, and, you know, I don't know if the city attorney is prepared to opine based on that five minutes of analysis that you've now had an opportunity to have. But I would like to ensure that the protections that we are trying to put in place for tenants across the city of Los Angeles are in an ordinance that will be defensible by this city, so that we can protect these tenants. I don't want to have an ordinance that's overturned tomorrow when the first lawsuit is filed. So, can we now hear from the city attorney whether you recommend that this language go forward, and whether we will have a defensible ordinance if it does?
Dave?
Thank you, Councilmember Kocorian, and I think that was very well stated. This is obviously not the preferred way to pursue legislation, but there is an urgency involved with all of this. We all feel that urgency, and everyone's working hard to get to the right place. I think it's fair to say the following. The language as originally drafted and transmitted to the city council, we believe, has a strong likelihood of surviving judicial scrutiny. That's why we wrote it the way we wrote it. Because we also are very concerned about putting out a product that would then be adopted by council and signed into law that could be problematic legally. That doesn't do certainly anyone any favors. This current change is not as strong, I'll be bold enough to say that, is not as strong legally. And minds can differ about that. You ask 10 lawyers a question, you may get 10 different answers. But we are your lawyers, and I appreciate Councilman Kocorian saying it the way he did. You're in the city attorney's office, and it's our job, which we take seriously, to present to you ordinances that we believe will survive judicial scrutiny. Now, this new sentence, replacing the former sentence dealing in the Section 49.98.3 application, if it's the council's will to move forward with this new sentence today, we will approve it as deformed in legality. We will defend it in the courts. I cannot handicap, I cannot handicap. We cannot handicap-
Please don't disrupt. Please don't disrupt.
We cannot handicap what a judge will do, and how a judge will interpret this. I believe if a judge interprets this sentence to be consistent with what we discussed earlier today at this meeting, that as long as the eviction process is not yet completed, which from our perspective is the notice of eviction in the days that run, we have a strong likelihood of prevailing. If however, a court interprets this sentence to be something more, that it's got a retroactive application well beyond the effective date of this ordinance, that's going to be tougher sledding. It just is, and I'm not going to tell you otherwise. But again, our office appreciates what you all are trying to do from a policy standpoint, to be as broadly applicable this ordinance as possible. And if it's the council's will to go with this sentence, and we are sued in court, we'll defend it and put forth the best arguments, and hopefully, the judge will interpret it in a way that will allow the ordinance to survive.
Mr. Kocorian?
Yeah, thank you. So, the ordinance does contain a severability clause.
It does.
So, if this new language that we just now had put in front of us is found to be unconstitutional, then 49.98.3 would be thrown out in its entirety, but the rest of the ordinance and its protections and all of the other protections that protect people who are being abused right now would still remain in effect? Is that correct?
It's correct with a large caveat. A judge will only be able to utilize that severability clause if, after the judge strikes the offending provision, the rest of the ordinance still works. The rest of the ordinance still carries forth your intent and can be appropriately applied by, in this case, tenants and landlords, so they can read it, still understand it, and still make it applicable. As I sit here right now, I cannot tell you if this sentence is determined by a court not to be lawful, whether the rest of the ordinance would still survive. We certainly will make that argument, and we will do our best to persuade the court. But that remains to be seen.
So, in the severability clause-
Everybody, please, let us work through this. Everybody, take a seat, please.
In the severability clause, just so that we clarify this for ourselves and for the record, in the severability clause, we find the city council hereby declares that it would have adopted this article and each provision thereof irrespective of whether any one or more provisions are found invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise enforceable. So, we are making the finding that even if 49.98.3 is thrown out in its entirety, we would still move forward with the rest of the ordinance.
We will absolutely make that argument. I think it's a reasonable argument to make, and we would certainly do our best to persuade the judge to go down that path. That would leave, however, an ordinance behind that would have more of a prospective look, meaning quite frankly, if evictions, if eviction notices were served before the effective date of this ordinance, that quite frankly, they may not be covered by the ordinance.
Say that last-
So, in other words, if a court strikes out this provision, the 49.98.3, as currently before you with Councilmember Sadio amending motion, it's possible, if a judge agrees to save the rest of the ordinance, that the ordinance would only provide eviction protection for those notices of eviction initially served after the effective date of this ordinance, which will limit its protective value. But ideally, a court will not find this sentence legally problematic, and we're going to fight to have a judge uphold it.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Okay, here we go again. Mr. Coretts?
So, I have a question on that. We've sort of got two points in that same sentence that was added, so I wonder if there's a way to divide it so that the original sentence is intact, and then we add in the intention to include cases that have not been fully adjudicated? So that if something was struck down, it would only be the adjudication part, and it wouldn't impact the other part that you're concerned about?
Thank you very much. Yeah, excuse me, just one sec. Well, that then brings us back to, and Councilmember Coretts, I think that's a great question. That brings us back to where I thought the council was going about 45 minutes ago, where we would have the two sentences. The first sentence is, as we had previously drafted and transmitted, "The article shall apply to tenancies where the tenant remains in possession and the period of notice required under the Civil Code is not expired." Adding to that, "A tenant is not required to vacate during the time an eviction is being adjudicated." Obviously, if a tenant believes this ordinance covers them, they're not going to vacate. They're going to stick around, hold over, remain in possession until a judge issues an order through the unlawful detainer judicial process. And the way these two sentences work together, that would allow for that. If a judge were to strike the second sentence, even though we would have vigorously tried to convince the judge not to, at least the first sentence remains.
Unfortunately, I think what you're proposing that section sentence doesn't get at what we're trying to get at.
It partially gets at what you're trying to get at. It's not going as far as some would prefer, and we respect that.
So I'm just wondering if we couldn't go as far as we'd like, but make that a separate sentence? I mean, if not, I would go with the original wording and take our chances, but I think if we're considering trying to not impact the bulk of that original wording, can we not ask for what we're trying to ask for in a separate sentence, rather than weaken it in the way that you had proposed?
Well, I don't think it weakens it the way that I proposed it, with all due respect, but it does not advance some of the policy desires that some individuals and organizations prefer. And again, we respect that. It's a choice that needs to be made.
So, can you write that in two sentences, so that the first one protects what we're concerned about losing if the whole thing struck down, and the second one actually gets at what we want to get at?
I'm not sure there's a way to reconcile it, as I sit here right now. Just to be candid.
I guess we'll just have to go with the way we have it, but it gives us more risk. If I were an attorney, I suspect I could write it the way I want it written.
I think you just did. With all respect.
Members, every moment that we delay, every second that we wait, somebody is in risk, at risk. We are speculating, or attempting to speculate, what a judge will or will not do. So I just think that at this moment, it is incumbent upon us to help, to do the best that we can to help the majority of the people by moving this and moving this now. I just think to speculate, we could do that for days, Mr. Coretts and others. So I think this is the time to move forward. And Dave, you're a great lawyer that you are, it's hard to handicap what a judge is going to do or not do, what a judge is going to interpret or not interpret.
Well put.
And we could go around and around and around, and I'm not saying that I'm adverse to us going around and around and around. But the reality is, until we move something to the mayor, and he signs it, and we put something in place, we're really not going to know what's going to happen. So I would think that we've had a very healthy debate. You guys have been very engaged since last week. Mr. O'Farrow, Martinez, Price, Sadio, everybody has done everything that they could to try to make this happen in a very quick fashion, and we've done that. So, members, I think we just, it is time to just call for the question, and we move forward. Streff?
So, we had a second amendment, too, from Mr. Bonin. Was that read in, about the RFO?
But there was no, it was, and there was no question where related to Mr. Bonin's amendment.
I know, but there were two amendments. One that we spent all this time-
Right, both amendments will be moved, and I will say one last thing, if I might. I don't want anyone to leave this chamber with the misunderstanding that the sentence, under application, if that's the will of the council, is legally flawed. We believe there are reasonable, appropriate arguments to make to a court to defend the application of that sentence as a lawful enactment of legislation by this council, and we will aggressively, if we do find ourselves in court, seek to uphold that sentence and make sure, with all of our abilities, that a court will not strike that sentence.
All right, so let's go to the vote, members. Let us, let us open the roll. Oh, in fact, we'll vote on this as amended. Correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Then let us open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Thank you. And we will send this, please keep it down, we will send this forthwith.
We now have to vote on the forthwith, so this becomes-
No, 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 we vote on a super forthwith, we're good.
We already did.
We've sent it forthwith.
We've sent it forthwith. And it's an ordinance, so we don't need to vote again on the forthwith? All right, thank you.
No, sir.
If we could keep it down. Judge?
Okay, thank you. We have more business here. Ladies and gentlemen, please, if you want to carry on your conversation, do so outside the chambers. Again, if you want to carry out your conversation, please do so outside the chambers. Okay, members, let's now take up item 21. 21A, correction, 21A, let's take that item. We have one speaker on this item. By the name of Residence 651. Okay, please come forward. If you can identify yourself, ma'am. You'll be given one minute to speak on this item. Okay? Who's representing Residence of 651?
651 North Broadway.
651 Broadway?
Your name is-
Shhh. Please, again, take your conversations outside the chambers. Thank you.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
My name is Adi, and I live on 651 North Broadway. We have a problem starting when we started on Reap, or REAP. The owner has been harassing us, and also management. They have a new management, and she's been harassing us, sending us letters, sending us that, you know, we have to do this and that, which we already do. Now, I just want to say that we all are disabled in the building, and we want to live like a human being, not like an animal. So, we are here to ask for help from you guys, to please help us, and, you know, we're doing our best, and please do your best as well to helping us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, members, item 21A is now before us. Let us open the roll on 21A. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Okay, next item. Oh, we only had one card on 21A, ma'am. So that was... So, that item's been fulfilled, okay? The public comment's been fulfilled on that item.
Thank you for the card.
Okay, well now, take general public comment. General public comment. Is there a Marco Juarez? Please come forward. Can you speak on a non-agenda item on general public comment? You'll be given one minute. Is there a Don Garza? Please come forward. Please come forward. Mr. Jumain, please come forward. Okay, Marco?
Yes, good morning, sir.
Good morning or afternoon.
September 25th, 2019, my first amendment to speak in my native language, a choice, you made a discriminatory action that were racist. I have a right to speak in either language that is comfortable and pleasant on the ADA. As an individual, I have a disability and I qualify a medical condition and a disabled person. Now, can I speak in my native language in Spanish?
Yes, so we have a translator.
That's el miércoles veinticinco de septiembre de 2019, el presidente J. Wilson Jr. está enojado y molesto conmigo.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold his time. Okay, we have our translator here.
Yeah.
Can I get a minute? Can I get my...
Give him five seconds on the clock, please. Five more seconds, twenty-nine seconds.
Por el hecho de hablar en mi idioma nativo, solicitaré una demanda legal en contra de Los Angeles City Council President J. Wilson Jr. y la Ciudad de Los Ángeles por daños discriminatorias en contra de un individuo deshabilitado. La ciudad en su capacidad municipal no debe violar mis derechos civiles como lo han hecho también servidores públicos que amenazan e intimidan a personas deshabilitadas. Como Joseph Placencia y su supervisor...
Let the translator come in.
Es que no le puedo... Se pasó demasiado. Usted quiere demandar la ciudad...
Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay.
Why don't you translate what he just said?
Yeah. I don't think I'm going to read this. I think I remember what he said. Basically, he wants to sue the city of Los Angeles because, is that working? The city of Los Angeles because of discrimination? I need to get my glasses. Do you want me to get my glasses and read this?
Just go ahead, if you can just summarize what he said, that'll be helpful.
Yes, and so he feels that he has been discriminated for speaking language, for speaking Spanish.
La idea, Joseph Placencia supervises the LAHCID y demás investigadores corruptos que han rostado desempeñar su trabajo.
Okay, okay. Why don't we get it? He's also mentioning a name that this person is corrupt, and he's not doing his job. That's his shit. He's referring to LAHCID.
Todos tenemos que respetar a nuestro presidente Donald Trump.
We all have to respect our president, Donald Trump. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a Don Garza here? Please come forward. Don Garza, last call? Okay, I don't see a Don Garza. How about Mr. Jumain, followed by Saray? 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 S-A-R-A-Y? Is that person here? How about Gilbert Mora? Okay, go ahead.
My name is Jabari Jumani. I've come before you a number of times before this. I'm a firefighter with the City of Los Angeles, and I'm the director of the Afiba Center in South Los Angeles. We are an African-centered organization, an institution which provides programming to heighten the level of consciousness and health in the African-American community. One of the issues we've spoken out on repetitively here in 2008, 2018 and 19, was the effects of gentrification, and some of the questions we had with Councilman Marquise Harris Dawson's Destination Crenshaw Program. As a result of us speaking out on the things that concerned us, we received, in retaliation for that, an eviction notice. I'm glad that the L.A. City Council is showing the heart to take up the stance of the people and prevent evictions without cause. On our eviction notice, there's listed no reason whatsoever, but we know what the reason is. The reason is retaliation. Thank you, and we will continue to stand against this injustice.
Thank you. Mr. Mora? Is there a Sarah Blanch? Sarah Blanch, please come forward.
She's not here.
Okay, she's not. Hold on, Mr. Mora. Is there a Cassandra Maraz? Okay, Mr. Mora, go ahead, one minute.
Right, my name is Gilbert Mora. I'm here representing L.A. DAPA, Los Angeles Drug and Alcohol Policy Alliance. We want to thank Councilmember Rue for putting the motion forward to do a feasibility study on ARIS, and we would ask that the council encourage the Plum Committee to agendize ARIS so that we can actually work on possibly getting this ordinance passed. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Okay. Hi, good morning. My name is Cassandra Maraz, and I'm a member of the Los Angeles Drug and Alcohol Policy Alliance, otherwise known as L.A. DAPA. I'm here to urge L.A. City Council, in particular the members of Plum, to agendize Council File seventeen dash zero one one seven, the ARIS motion. This motion is only asking for a report back from the City Planning Department and CLA to determine the feasibility of ARIS zones in the city of L.A. This is an often planning and lanyard's tool that will help communities throughout L.A. to fight against the over-concentration of alcohol outlets and protect the neighborhood's overall health and safety. So I urge L.A. City Council, in particular Plum, to consider agendizing Council File seventeen dash zero one one seven. Thank you.
Thank you. Brenda Villanueva, Brenda, please come forward. Maurina Cintron, Maurina, please come forward. Veronica Delara, please come forward. Brenda?
Hi, good morning.
Good afternoon.
Well, good afternoon, right? So much time passed by. My name is Brenda Villanueva, and I am currently the co-chair of L.A. DAPA. I believe that this ARIS motion is the perfect opportunity for the city of L.A. to heighten the voice of the community. The ARIS motion, which is City File seventeen dash zero one one seven, is asking for report back on the feasibility of having a city planning tool that would identify areas in vulnerable communities heavily impacted by alcohol use by limiting alcohol licenses. It would allow communities to collaborate with their elected officials to prioritize public health and safety. We hope that the Plum Committee hears us out and supports us and agendases City File seventeen dash zero one one seven. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Maurina?
Yes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. So my name's Maurina Cintron, and I'm here representing L.A. DAPA. I'm here to ask that the committee please encourage the Plum Committee to agendize the Alcohol Restricted Use Subdistrict Motion, also known as ARIS, Council File seventeen dash zero one one seven. And this is why. Eighty percent of the L.A. area census tracts exceed alcohol outlet density guidelines set by ABC to protect public health and safety. Of those census tracts, 23% are heavily above ABC's guidelines, and 34 are severely above ABC's guidelines, which is 300% or more for our general public. I want to also thank Rue, Councilman Rue, for introducing ARIS, and Councilmember Dawson for extending it for one more year, but we need to get it agendized. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on, Veronica, before you begin. Is there a Lauren Bustillo? How about Miriam Castro? Okay, go ahead.
Buenas tardes, council members. Mi nombre es Veronica Delara, and I am the co-chair of the California Alcohol Policy Alliance, Kappa, and we are in support with the work, we support the work of Los Angeles Drug and Alcohol Policy Alliance, L.A. DAPA. I'm here to request that the Plum Committee agendize ARIS Council File one seven zero zero, one seven zero one one seven, a tool that the city of L.A. can use to help vulnerable communities that are being impacted by alcohol. Let's work together to build an environment that prioritizes public health and safety and acts on it now. We trust that it will lead the city council to give each community a tool to improve quality of life. Thank you for your time. Please agendize ARIS.
Thank you. Your name, ma'am?
My name is Miriam.
Miriam, thank you. Is there Adalene Berta? Berta Adalene?
No, she's not.
Oh, she's right behind you. Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Sorry.
No, you're first.
I'm sorry. I need translation, please.
If we can get our translator, please come to the center. Does our translator have a name? I'm sorry. What's her name? Madam translator, thank you.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Miriam Castro.
Good morning. My name is Miriam Castro.
Del Grupo Mujeres Transformando la Comunidad.
I'm with a group calling Women Transforming Communities.
Del Distrito Número Uno.
I'm in District One.
Estoy aquí para solicitar que agenden la moción archivo número 17-0117.
I'm here to ask you to agendize the motion one... One...
Seven?
Seven, one seven zero, dash zero one one seven.
Ya que el alcohol afecta a la comunidad de una manera negativa...
Alcohol affects the community.
Ya que está saturada de la venta de alcohol.
We already have too many places that sell alcohol.
Como comunidad, en muchas ocasiones cuando camino...
Oftentimes when I walk in the community...
Para comprar mis necesidades del hogar...
When I go shopping for my basic needs...
He tenido que evadir personas intoxicadas...
I see a lot of people that are intoxicated on the street.
Para no ser agredida.
And I have avoided being assaulted by them.
Lo mismo pasa con jóvenes saliendo de las escuelas y familias que caminan a sus casas.
So I think that the students that are in the schools have the same experience when they go to school and when they go back home.
Esta moción archivo 17-0117...
Seventeen zero one seven, I think it's the motion.
Puede usarse para proteger los vecindarios donde hay...
So this motion can be used to protect the community.
Donde hay más incidentes. Gracias.
Especially the communities who have more incidents. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a Berta Adalene? Is there a Mac Shorty here? No? How about Isaac Hong? Okay, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Adalene Berta from Social Model Recovery Systems, and I'm speaking as a member of the Los Angeles Drug and Alcohol Policy Alliance. I'm here to ask that ARIS motion file number seventeen dash zero one one seven be agendized. As many of you know, L.A. has a trouble with over-concentration of alcohol realtors, and having ARIS can protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the residents, restrict further over-concentration of on-sale, off-sale, and new alcohol establishments, protect vulnerable populations such as our youth and our elderly, reduce the negative impacts of alcohol for the residents of our local communities and neighborhoods. Therefore, agendizing this motion will allow for the city to provide a report back on the feasibility of ARIS. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hong? Is there Sabrina Johnson? Please come forward, if you're in the chambers. Sabrina Johnson? Is there Catherine Alvarez? No? How about a Dawn? Hold on, Mr. Hong. How about a Jerry Hall? Please come forward. Okay, Mr. Hong, go ahead, one minute.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Isaac Hong. I'm also a member of L.A. DAPA. I'm here today for asking you to agendize the motion, Council File one seven dash zero one one seven, which is Alcohol Restricted Use Subdistrict, also known as ARIS. So ARIS, ARIS is a flexible tool. For instance, if the community does not want any more local stores within certain streets, they can choose to put on ARIS on those blocks where businesses requesting type 20 and type 21 will be denied. So not all alcohol licenses will be denied. It is up to the community to decide which types of alcohol licenses applications they want to disallow in their designated community. This can allow for other businesses to come into the community, including restaurants as well. So I believe all the business owners who already, like, have businesses over there, they don't want more competition. So it's not only for the community members, it's also the people who already do their businesses in their certain areas. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Jerry Hall.
Hold on, Mr. Hall, is there a Mike Hale? Please come forward. Okay, Mr. Hall, go ahead, one minute.
Hi there, Jerry Hall with a company named PorSafe. I am a service provider to L.A. DAPA and other organizations and city governments that want to look at data relating to alcohol licensing. The ABC is in the licensing business. In 2017 and 18, they had over 11,000 license applications, and they turned down eight in the state. The ABC recommends local control. I've been to several meetings for several years and have spoken with the director of the ABC himself, and he urges cities to take local control. Your districts, each individual district, has anywhere from two to 10 times the amount of licenses that are recommended for your district. So that over-concentration is causing a lot of problems that could be tied to crime. I urge you to use different, a variety of different data sources to learn this stuff, because it's tough to get from the ABC website. And, you know, one of the biggest arguments is that license control is bad for business, safer communities are better for business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker on general public comment, Mike Hale?
Yeah, my name is Michael Hale. I'm here for the Afiba Center, to say the Afiba Center. We got an eviction notice about three months ago. We'd like to get, we'd like to have this thing solved. Like to have in writing what are the problems that we need to solve, and that we can take care of them. And another thing I need to do is just, like, just take over this place and just, because you seem to be, you seem to know how to take care of business. I was really impressed with this morning. And I think we can solve the homeless problem just as easy. We can take Jan Perry advice as far as identifying all faking warehouses in the community. We have all these council people here. Let's identify them in your area, and we can start putting people in these warehouses. We can bring in portable toilets, portable showers, portable kitchens, and we can solve this problem overnight.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for joining us.
I'll be back with more advice later in the week.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. So with that, we'll now close general public comment. With that, members, we're going to recess our regularly scheduled meeting and go into the special meeting. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bloomingfield, Bonn, and Buscagino. Sadio, Harris, Dawson, Rizar, Coretts, Kokorian, Lee, Martinez, O'Farrow, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present in the court, Mr. President. On the special is item 33, and that is an item for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. Oh, I'm sorry, it's an item noticed for public hearing, sir.
Okay, let's take the cards now on the special item. Patricia McCullister, please come forward. How about Eric Previn? Cory Schmidt? Wayne? Lynn Moses? Lynn here? Okay. Okay, so with that, Madam Clerk, let us, no members, no speakers on the queue. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Okay, that's approved. Let's now adjourn the special meeting and return to our regularly scheduled meeting. And what's before us, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, there's motions for a posting referral.
Posted and referred.
That clears the desk, sir.
Thank you. Any announcements, members? Mr. Price with forward announcement?
Yes, Mr. President, Economic Development Committee will meet at 1:15. 1:15.
1:15 for Economic Development Committee. Okay. Any other announcements? Can we all rise for adjourning motions, please? All rise for adjourning motions. Looking to my left, to my right. I have one, members. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today's meeting in honor of Harbor Area Planning Commissioner James Diamond, who passed away on September 28th. JD, as we know him, was a leader and community activist in San Pedro, faithfully serving the coastal San Pedro Neighborhood Council, taken the presidency in 2014, very active with the LAPD Community Police Advisory Board, and was one of the founding members of the LAPD Harbor Area Volunteer Officers. He brought the same work ethic and dedication to service wherever he worked. He also served in the Army until 2000... Correction. He served in the Army and was also a leader in the local International Longshore Warehouse Union. JD was a stead, he was, he was a stead presence wherever he went, maintaining an even-killed demeanor, ensuring that the conversation was focused on solutions to the communities that he served. James Diamond worked tirelessly on several issues critical to the L.A. Harbor community, as well as assisting with the reopening of the Harbor Jail. On October 15th, his family, friends, colleagues, and neighbors paid tribute to JD at the International Longshore Workers Union Memorial Hall. The San Pedro Elks and the Wilmington VFW gave an incredible tribute. And then just this past Sunday, there was a burial at sea in JD's beloved Pacific Ocean. Our hearts go out to his wife, his kids, his in-laws, family, friends, and colleagues. James Diamond, there's definitely going to be a void in our San Pedro community with the passing of James Diamond. May he rest in peace. Thank you. We are now adjourned. Thank you.